Good evening, good morning, everyone. Welcome to this budget hearing. Before we start the budget hearing, I want to recognize and welcome the members of the Muslim community that are here with us today in celebration of a successful Ramadan holiday. And I'd like our honorable mayor and our honorable President Scott to lead us in a special recognition of our guest.
Good morning. Well, good morning. It's an exciting day. I am pleased to welcome the members of the Rochester's Muslim community to City Hall. Thank you all for joining us to help us mark the conclusion of the holy month of Ramadan in Rochester. I hope you all had a good fast. I want to thank President Scott as well as Chairperson Malik Evans, Chair of the Finance Committee, and all of the members of City Council for accommodating the ceremony in our budget hearing. Ramadan is a true time to reflect spiritually. It is a time when our Muslim brothers and sisters strive for personal improvement to deepen their devotion to God and rededicate themselves to the wisdom and guidance of the Quran. It is a time of celebration when families and friends gather to share in God's holy bounty. I am proud to recognize this important holiday in City Hall. And now I would like for President Scott to say a few words and then we will... Okay. All right. I would like to invite Dr. Tabasim Javi, the President of the Islamic Center Board of Directors, to join us. Doctor? Islam is deeply woven into the fabric of the United States and Rochester dating back to the founding of America. An estimated three to seven million American Muslims represent a diverse swath of races, ethnicities, socioeconomic backgrounds, and are growing an important segment of our population. The diversity of Rochester is our city's greatest strength, and the contribution of Rochester's Muslim community contribute greatly to the strength of our city. And... Whereas Eid al-Fitr celebrates many virtues, including devotion, self-sacrifice, and peace. These values can be guiding principles for all citizens to hold in their hearts regardless of background, religion, or circumstance throughout the year. And... Now, therefore, we lovely A. Warren Mayor of the City of Rochester and Loretta C. Scott, President of City Council, do hereby proclaim June 4th to be Eid al-Fitr Day in Rochester. Thank you.
Thank you, lovely Warren, and thank you, Councilwoman Scott. I want to appreciate very much the recognition that has been accorded to the Muslim community, and we are immensely grateful, and we are immensely full of gratitude that this recognition has been bestowed to us, and we really appreciate it. And we will continue to work with all the members of the community and make ourselves, you know, model citizens as the Muslim community in Rochester. Thank you very much. Thank you kindly.
Yes. Now, I would like to invite Dr. Malik and Dr. Alaf Mir to share brief remarks. I also want to thank you both, as well as the Muslim community, for all that you're doing for the citizens of Rochester. The bookbag giveaway and the food that you give out on Jefferson Avenue truly is appreciated, and we thank you for going into our community and not only providing opportunities for them to receive nourishment, but also nourishment for the body, but also nourishment for the soul. So, thank you very much. Please welcome Dr. Malik and Dr. Alaf Mir.
Thank you, lovely Mayor, lovely Warren. You are great, and we are so grateful to you for helping us celebrate our Eid al-Fitr at the City Hall. You should know, I'm going to say a few sentences as a historian, that the first Muslim, first slave freed in the United States was a Muslim slave in 1733. And he succeeded with his master, and he paid his fare back to England and Senegal. And he rearranged the Arabic library section of the British Museum, which is the largest library in Europe. But I would be remiss if I do not take you around the history of the city of Rochester. In 1963, Sheriff Andrew Skinner, he raided the Nation of Islam Temple on North Street, and he dug his heel into the concrete sidewalk, into the concrete sidewalk, and he declared he will never allow Muslims to hold in the County of Monroe. So, we should know there was a Trump before Trump. And at 911, we are very grateful to Mayor William Johnson to come to our mosque and reassure us that, don't worry, we are with you. We were very grateful to the town of Brighton to assure us the same thing. And on top of that, to be very grateful to you to do that last year, and we are doing this in civil duty. Thank you.
Good morning. You know, it is not wise to invite two professors to the podium and tell them to be brief. I'll say, we're just very proud to live in a city where we can be part of the social fabric and feel welcomed here, and we feel honored to be a part of this community, and we look forward to contributing to making this community a better place for everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, thank you to City Council for allowing us to do this. Thank you to our Muslim community for coming to City Hall and allowing us to celebrate and join you in celebration of the holy month of Ramadan. Take care.
Thank you. And congratulations on a great celebration. I believe there's a... Is there a reception in the atrium? Okay, great. Save me some food. But thank you. We will. Thank you. Thank you. I'd ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Evans.
Present.
Councilmember Clifford.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Vice President Lightfoot.
President Scott.
Thank you. Today's hearings will start with undistributed contingency, then we'll move on to the administration, DES, lunch, RFD, drives, and then emergency communication. We're here today to discuss the mayor's proposed budget of $552,047,000, which keeps the property tax flat, as I may add, and we are going to start with undistributed and contingency. Any questions on undistributed or contingency? Yes, Councilmember Ortiz?
I saw in the budget that the pension costs throughout the out years are beginning to decrease, which obviously are very helpful, but the health costs will continue to rise in the out years. Was wondering if by any chance there are any additional measures we might be taking to take a look at cost-effective measures while obviously still providing quality care, but what are the things we might be looking into in order to assist us in maybe managing that cost a little bit better?
We are always reviewing our benefits costs that we're doing to mitigate the increase in that cost. As you know, with the Labor Management Healthcare Agreement that we have between the unions and the administration, has held those costs at 3.75 for the city's contribution. Also, though, we look at having a healthy workforce, because of course, if you have a healthy workforce, that decreases the cost around healthcare. So, the wellness, the program that we're putting in place around well-being is moving in a direction where we're totally looking at our employees' whole self and not just the physical component of it, but also the component associated with possibly any stress, any social issues, taking into account, of course, physical, but also financial and mind and spirit as a whole. So, these programs are all being put in place to help continue to mitigate that cost of benefits.
Right. And do we every, I don't know, every year, every so many years revisit the carrier in which we go through? I think it's been MVP for quite a while. Do we just continue to work with them on cost-effective measures, or do we occasionally go back out for, I don't know if RFP is the right word, if you will, for this particular subject, but, you know, to take a look at what other companies potentially might be offering?
We are actually in the process of, we've done an RFP, got those responses back, and the committee is in the process of reviewing that to see who that provider will be going forward.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tim, if you look on under contingency 14-1, it has a percent change of 489.1%. Can you explain that? So, if a layperson was to look at that, they'd say, "Oh, what's going on?" Can you explain?
Sure. So, if you turn a page to 14-2, there's an explanation that talks about the amounts reflecting in contingency, right, are reflected after amendments are made. So, throughout the year, we amend typically the budget for contingency, so it shows you what the original allocations were for 18, 19, and 17, 18. So, 18, 19, it was 8.5 million, right? 17, 18, it was 7.5 million. So, this is where we build in allowance for, you know, wage settlements, et cetera, and this gets amended throughout the year.
Any other? Councilmember Gruber.
Thanks. So, Chris, back to the contingency, it says the major increase is due to potential pending labor agreements, and I think at some point, it specifically calls out, although I can't find it right now, it specifically calls out Locust Club. But there's also, are there other negotiations that are going to be happening this year?
Yes. IEOE is currently expired as well, and there'll be an upcoming negotiation. Passy, what's the other agreement that expires in 2020?
Locust Club, it's time again to do that contract. The contract we settled was a contract that was, had expired three years ago, so that's the one that's identified specifically now, but we are going into negotiations this year for another contract with the Locust Club.
And I think I noticed in maybe the drives, the DES budget, there was also ASMEs?
Yes. ASME is also going to be going into negotiations. So, Locust Club, ASME, and IEOE.
So, with all of those negotiations coming up, how is the 3584600, like, where does that number come from?
So, again, the change you're looking at, right, the 18, 19 number of 732.9, right, is really a winnowed down number. If you look at, again, on page 14, too, the original allocation was 8.5 million. So, the change, you know, sort of approved to approved, if you will, right, would actually be down, not up, right? So, in terms of how the wage allocations break out, you know, what I can say is that there's a contingency includes an allowance for wage negotiations as well as general contingency. So, without sort of, you know, frankly, tipping our hands as to how much is in there for wage settlements, it's just all lumped into one number.
Is it a formula?
No. Well, it's not a formula per se, but we make some assumptions around what those percentages might be.
Thanks.
Councilmember Clifford.
Thank you. Just along those lines, I'm assuming there's sort of a back-of-envelope list of things you expect to have to deal with. Judgments and claims, I think, being one of them, and I think if I saw yesterday the Trayvon Roe lawsuit, I know we've got the Police Accountability Board that may end up costing some additional monies. Do you anticipate those being more or less than in previous years?
So, we do have coverage in our insurance fund for any lawsuits that may come up. As it pertains to the lawsuit regarding the PAB, we had allocated, I believe, last month some dollars to hire an attorney, and so we have, you know, it's our understanding from discussions with council that attorney is going to cost about that much, and so we've already taken care of that. As it pertains to future lawsuits, we have dollars that's in our insurance fund that will cover that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Councilmember Ortiz?
Just a quick question. Can you refresh our memory? How often do we go back for contract negotiations with, like, RPD and RFD and those? How often do we? Is it two years, every three years, every year?
The life of the contract, ASME contract, was five years. The others are usually three years.
So, just to follow up, on page 16-8, there's a listing of the contracts and the expiration dates. So, you can see what the terms are.
What page is that again?
16-8.
Okay, so, three, or five and three. And we just settled, though, for back amounts, correct, with the Locusts?
Correct.
Okay. So, we had to do that based on the three years that it expired, but now we're restarting for a new set of three years.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on undistributed contingency? Nothing else? Okay. We'll move on to the next session, which is the administration. Madam Mayor, any comments or anything you want to say before we get to questioning?
Just thank you for the time and to give you an opportunity to, you know, given the administration an opportunity to answer any questions about the budget. As you know, last year and the year before last, we requested a number of different studies from City Council. You will see that this budget actually reflects what we learned, and we wanted to be more effective, more efficient, and provide quality service. And, you know, we had experts come in from all over the country to show us how to align and to be able to do that. And so, there's a number of changes in this budget that you will see, and they are based upon what other governments are doing nationally to be able to provide the best service possible to our citizens. As you all know, governments are being asked to do more and more. People are looking to the city to do everything, and years ago, we weren't built for this. We weren't built to be everything to everybody, but we are taking on that role and trying to, we continue to provide quality and exceptional service to our citizens. And so, as we go through the budget, you will see that it aligns with the Baker-Tilly study, as well as the FISH study, as well as the second IT study that was done, and we will look forward to answering any questions that you may have.
Thank you. So, what I'll do is I'll start off with just any general questions that anyone may have under the administration section, being that everyone here is assembled that is able to answer those questions. So, Vice President Lightfoot, and then Councilmember...
All right. Thank you, sir, and good morning, everyone. My first question is in line with, first of all, just before I even get into the meat and potatoes of the budget, I'm looking at the process, and we're talking with a few members, I think there was not really an understanding of the process. So, when you look at the budget, for instance, it says, and if you could explain this to me, just for clarity purposes, that basically, we only just, we're allowed to vote up or down the budget. However, it does talk about if the City Council actions include any additions, the budgets may be presented to the mayor. So, what does that mean when it says additions? Are we able to amend the budget, or, you know, what actually in the budget process of making additions from City Council do we have, the power and the authority?
So, City Council doesn't have what we call line item veto, so you can't go through the budget and say, "I don't like this particular thing, and I'm lining it out and putting zero." You can reduce certain allocations to a particular department. So, if you say that, you know, the mayor's department, you know, you want to reduce certain allocations to that department, then you can reduce the amount of money, but, in that, in a dollar amount, but not necessarily white out a particular program. And you can request, and we have in the past, you requested that we change the budget and amend the budget to add certain amounts, but we present to you what we call a balanced budget, and so if we move money around, it has to all add up in the end. So, that's really...
Okay. So, we do have the authority to recommend requests for dollars, specific, not specific dollar amounts, because that'd be line item, but overall dollar amounts or programs.
You can ask for additional dollars, but we would have to take those dollars from somewhere else. So, our budget is balanced. So, the dollar amount that we provide to you based on the programs or the way that it's aligned is balanced, and so if you request additional dollars, it needs to come from somewhere, and it has to all, in the end, balance out.
Got you. Thank you. Can I continue?
Continue.
I got a couple. Okay, thank you. Now, the, one of the things I love about the budget and the process of the budget is the fact that there's a community input session that seems to be done budget after budget. One of my questions is, do we track this community input? Do we track the results of the community input? And let me explain what I'm saying. In 2018-2019 budget, for instance, in the town hall phone calls, 16,239 direct dial calls were dialed, 4,127 took part in the call. But in this year, we had, or in 20, yeah, this particular budget, 28,718 houses were called, but only 3,000 or 3,578 individuals took part in the call. So, how is it that, like, doubled amount of calls were made, but less amount of people partake in them, whereas, you know, half the calls are made last budget, but more people partook? Is there, are we tracking, are we calling at the wrong time? What are we doing that affects that result?
So, we try to call at the most opportune time, which is after dinner, and we looked at doing it, and we generally do it on a Tuesday or a Thursday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. And so, sometimes the numbers that are being called because we buy the list, and so sometimes the numbers that are being called are disconnected, and so they're calling... And so they're calling, they're robo-dialing these numbers. And sometimes people are not home, or they push the button not to participate. So there is varying factors. We can make the phone calls. We make a phone call prior to, to let our citizens know that tomorrow we'll be making this phone call to you at this particular time, and this is what you need to do. And we also give them a number to call back if they, you know, missed the call and they want to participate, or they want to, you know, participate in the call. So that was something that we started doing about two years ago. We used to just do actual, just meetings. We wanted to make sure that everyone, especially our seniors and our disabled folks, are able to participate. They may not be able to come to City Hall in person or come to a in-person hearing. And so we wanted them to be able to do that, and we found this is an effective way for them to be able to do that. But there are a number of varying factors that could be the drop-off. We can talk to the provider and see if there is a way that we can increase that number.
Okay. I think this, it's a great opportunity for our citizens to really partake in the budget. But are we also tracking, like, there's a lot of input that is given from the citizens for the budget. And I see, when you read throughout the budget, you will see here and there, some of those ideas are actually implemented. And so that's why I ask, are we, is, what is our tracking mechanism to go back and say, you know, like, hey, we've implemented 10 of your ideas from these hearings? Or, you know, some of these ideas have actually made it into our budget? I think it's something that, you know, the community would really like to see or hear, that their time is actually being, is productive and is also being implemented. So that's why I asked about, is there tracking mechanisms for that process?
We can talk to communications about that. We don't necessarily do a press release or a press event saying that, you know, based on the calls and the budget input sessions, this is what we actually did in order to, you know, this is where it's reflected in the budget. We don't, we haven't done that in the past. It's something that we can look at doing in the, in the future.
Okay. Thank you. And my final question on this particular part, the, when I look at the budget, normally, even with the city school district budget, you'll see pie graphs or different graphs. I'm a visual learner. So in this particular budget, there are very few graphs. One of the things that kind of sticks out to me is when you look at, when you do put it in a pie graph form, it appears that we only spend like 3% of our money on youth and recreation. Now, when you align that to the 2034 vision, of course, we're saying that we want to start building a city for our youth, for our future. But in reality, we give $119 million to the Rochester School District that is reflected in the budget, but it really doesn't show in a form where people, the average citizen will look at the budget and go, if you looked at it from a pie chart form, you would see that only 3% goes to youth and recreation. And, you know, that, that, I just doesn't think really align. I think there's a better way, maybe, that we could use to show that we actually make a more, larger investment with our youth and families.
So we can change the pie chart to reflect what we contribute actually to the city school district, which is more than any of the other, I believe, any of the, of the other departments. And so it would be a higher allocation if you combine youth and families with what we contribute to the city school district in a pie graph. And we can provide that to you. I'll ask, I'll ask budget to do that. In the first section, we, we provide a children and families budget, and it's $156 million. And so we can make it easier for people to understand if we combine that, and you'll see that, given what we provide with the city school district, as well as what we do for youth and family services or the Department of Youth and Recreation, that combined, that would probably be our largest contribution as a, as a city.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spall?
Well, thank you. Good morning. Let me start by saying thank you for a balanced budget. This is my 12th budget hearing. I'm not tired yet. But I do want to start for myself, lifting the conversation a little bit higher, a little bit about process, like Councilmember Lightfoot. But when I look at the shifts that you're making in the mayor's office, I'm hoping to get a little bit more information about the process you use to make these shifts. And I'm looking at community wealth building, for example. You must be really confident that that work, that program, I'm looking at Lomax, hello everybody, is going to do what we need it to do because you're putting more resources in there. You're taking money from other places and moving that in. So my question is a higher level question around process and how that particular effort with the new resources will flow down to small business and actually to our citizens, to our residents. So I wonder, maybe it would be helpful to all of us to hear that I just, you know, we can go through line by line. I think for me, at this point anyway, I'm interested in process and how you got to some of these decisions throughout the whole mayor's office. You're taking more on in your office, and I think you're probably doing it with certainty that that's the right thing to do. So I'm wondering if you could just give us a brief overview?
So about, five years ago, we started the Office of Innovation and Strategic Initiatives. And we found that that office was able to really work with our internal departments and our external partners to deliver on behalf of our citizens, not only when it comes down to analyzing data, but also when it comes down to really executing and working with to move certain projects along. And so it's not that they do it in a silo. If we take Bike Share, for example, and Vanpool, these were programs that the city and DES were already in the process of trying to do, but because of all the other work, it was not moving along at an expedient pace. They were able to take that information on, be able to study it, and see what's happening across the country with other cities and be able to execute it. And so through that process and looking with the Rochester Monroe Anti-Poverty Initiative and using data to analyze what's happening with poverty, which neighborhood it's happening in, when it came down to the Office of Community Wealth Building, it comes out of Richmond, Virginia. We analyzed and looked at what that particular city was doing as it pertains to really being able to give their, their citizens access to the opportunity to build wealth. We assume that people in our community know how to build wealth because they just do. But that's not, that's not the case. If you don't have anyone in your life that can tell you that you need to invest in this or you need to, you know, pay your bills a certain way, or you need, there's a, there's a philosophy, there's a plan, there's a pathway to success and a way to do this so that we can pass it on to future generations. That was our philosophy with the Office of Community Wealth Building. And they have been able to go out and get a number of different grants to support the work in which they're doing. So when we talk about financial empowerment centers, we are, I believe, one of a couple of cities across the country that were selected to actually implement this model, to go into places like REOC and MCC and, and, you know, even the hospitals and to really try to provide this empowerment for our citizens to be able to know that we're in this with you. We want you to be successful. We want you to be financially successful. When IBM came in five years ago, they talked about the fact that in Rochester, the reason why poverty continues to grow is because we never turn off the tap. What do I mean by that? It said that the bucket never is empty because in our community, someone can get out of poverty today and they are cut off of social services, but in five years, they will be back in the system because no one has taught them how to remain, you know, out of the, out of the system in that way. You know, their car breaks down, they can't get to work, they get a ticket, they lose their driver's license. So there's all these other life situations that happen, and, and our citizens suffer because of it. When I started off talking about the government is being asked to do more and more, this is one of the things that we are, we are looking at because if we don't provide our citizens with the opportunity to be successful, to know that we will help you through this process, that you're not in this alone, then other folks won't do it. Everybody is operating, and we're trying to change this through the anti-poverty initiative and also the system supports work that we're doing. But in the end, we need to move expeditiously. The financial empowerment centers that we will start that work, we have started that work, will, 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 will open up and start in September. We're doing the backbone work with that, working with our banks and their CRA credit, meaning that any bank that, you know, is in our community, that's a bank and not a credit union, they have to do what they call CRA credits. And they, and they have to give back to the community in which they serve. Well, as you all know, that many of the banks have pulled out of our community branches. But the ways in which they can give back is by giving our citizens financial support through programs like financial empowerment centers, as well as the work that we're doing with cash, helping people and our citizens with being able to not pay exorbitant amounts to H&R Block and Jackson Hewitt, but to be able to get their financial, their, their tax refund. We were, we're getting those numbers now, but that's another program that we worked into. So overall, this is truly about seeing a need, recognizing it, and then, and then implementing it in a way that is most effective and efficient for our citizens. Now, a lot of the dollars that are being spent is grant dollars, and they've been able to access these grant dollars by going out and talking to and being a part of national networks that not only puts Rochester on the map, but also lets our citizens know that we care about them in a way that we're willing to make the investment. Also, the budget reflects that. We, we made some tough decisions. We made some tough choices and, and analyze what we do well and what we've done well. And what we haven't done well, we've let go. And we've kept those things that we believe truly, truly transform lives. And we believe that the Office of Community Wealth Building and what we're doing in the Office of Innovation and as well as what the Project Management and Information Services Office will transform how we deliver services to our citizens and provide them with exceptional quality service to meet the needs of everyone in our community.
Well, thank you. And, you know, they say that if you look at someone's checkbook, you can see their values, what they write for, what they give away. I think the same is true of a city. And if you look at our budget, where we're putting more leveraging, it's our values, and I appreciate that. The other thing we've been thinking a lot about in terms of poverty, you know, a lot of people say they want to describe what gateway drugs are to, or what's the gateway to poverty and/or to drug use. It's trauma. It has very little to do with actual, you know, a substance. It has to do with what our citizens face every day. And you're absolutely right. You know, we talk about being one paycheck away, one car payment away. And obviously, the work that I do, I see people whose whole families become homeless in the span of three months. So I'm grateful for this. I want to keep a watch on it because we want it to trickle down to our most basic needs for our citizens, financial literacy, just even saving. You know, a lot of our wonderful, wonderful residents don't have habits. They haven't been able to see them modeled. Our city can model those, so I'm grateful for that. I'm gonna, in my last six months, 22 days, and 16, no, I'm just kidding, who's counting? But obviously, and Lomax, I want to see if I can spend some time with you and actually even invite you to see some of the work we're doing with, with young families who are really struggling. But thank you because this shows a value. I think we have to watch it. Obviously, it's a lot more money, a lot more energy. I assume, Mayor, that you're taking it under your wing in your office. Who will it report to? Is it directly to you or is it to the deputy mayor? Where does it fall in your, in your, in your chart?
So they report directly to the deputy mayor, but I meet with them monthly so that we can keep, keep an eye on it. One other thing I want to note is that it's also the leverage of the city to get involved in some other things. One of the things that, you know, the office has brought to our attention is the amount that a lot of our citizens get into a lot of debt because of car loans. And they're paying $20,000, and they got a $20,000 car loan for a $10,000 car. And just played out, I just had an elderly citizen yesterday that I was speaking to about this, and, you know, they are really being taken advantage of. And so we can have the conversation because we have built those relationships with the banks in order to let them know that, you know, we're preying on people that are, you know, not in a situation that's a good situation. Why would we do this? So why are we doing this this way? So there are many opportunities where the city can utilize the information they have to engage with our government partners like the Attorney General's Office, like Empire Justice, like other folks that have the responsibility to do consumer credit, consumer protection. So this allows us to really get and have those discussions with our citizens to know what the problem is and be able to now go and talk to the AG's office about this is what's happening and this is what you need to look into. And also help our citizen at the same time, get out of that situation if we can because of the partnerships that we're able, that we're going to be able to build through this.
You know, playing a little bit of a watchdog role, we hear about often, I hear about appliances valued at $250 that are paid $2,000. You know, we see this in appliances, we see it in furniture, and then all of a sudden, after paying thousands, the refrigerator is taken out because you miss a payment. So anything we can do to keep that even, it's a very basic need. It's really a day-to-day. So even though it's high level in your office, it has to trickle down, and I think it will, to really having good habits, better habits, just being able to educate and be partners. So I'm grateful for that. So thank you. I'm sorry to take so much time on this, but I think it's a very important part of the mayor's budget and a vision that you have. And we're gonna, I think we're gonna want to have updates all along, but, but thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Gruber?
Thanks. I'll just, I just want to piggyback since Councilmember Spall brought up community wealth building. I think this was an incredible first year for the department. I think the financial empowerment centers, we had two work sessions on it. I think it was, it's a fantastic program. And to be able to bring in some new money from the outside, outside of our city is really exciting as well. But as Councilmember Spall mentioned, there's, there are a lot of, there's a lot of significant and I think fairly ambitious growth in the, in a fairly new department this year. I just have two, two, two questions about it. One is, there's talk about a new staff person that is going to look over adult workforce programming. And, you know, in, in my outside job, I'm working a lot with the workforce development community in Rochester, which at times feels very disjointed. I know last year, we, we, the city funded YAMTEP, I think for the first time. And obviously, there's REJOB, and now there's OTR transitioning. So I just want to understand, what is the vision for adult workforce training? Why in OCW? And how's it going to function?
So because we are transitioning out of OTR, and as I said, we looked at what we do well and what we have some challenges with. And so REJOB, we've graduated two classes, all of those individuals and people are working and they're doing well. Part of that, in YAMTEP, the same thing, we've graduated a number of, a number of people, they, they have about, I believe, an 80% placement rate for those that complete the program. And so we continue to fund that. We've been funding YAMTEP for about three years and REJOB for two years. As it pertains to the adult workforce person, there's a part of what OTR does, which is adult readiness, a training that they provide that allows for this individual to go into these different workforce development and give them workforce training and job readiness training, to be able to connect with those people that are out in the community that's doing workforce development training a lot better than the city was doing it, and give them the opportunity to utilize this to, for our citizens. Also, this person will come in and work with the people that we're working with, rather, we're talking about those that are starting businesses or those that are in business or want to become an employee, to have those discussions with them about where they are in life, what is expected of them when they enter into the workforce, or what they should expect of their employees. And so that's part of what their role will be in, in, in the Office of Community Wealth Building. Because we are going to be working directly with our citizens through the Financial Empowerment Centers, people that will be going into the workforce from MCC, from REOC, we want to be able to have those continued connections to not just tell them how to be better financially. We also want to have a real discussion with them about... We also want to have a real discussion with them about what is expected of them when they enter into the workforce. The best place to do that is actually out of this office, so it's not disjointed. Um, and then we continue to fund REJOB and can fund, um, YAMTEP, which are funded, uh, which are extern- one is internal, but YAMTEP is external. Um, but they will continue to go and be a part of that, uh, job readiness training that we provide there as well.
So, so this person is not gonna be doing any of the soft skills training? This person's gonna be connecting people to the programs that exist, whether they're internal, external, or otherwise?
Sometimes they will do the soft skill training. So for REJOB and YAMTEP, they will do the soft jobs training, the soft skills training. But it's not, but they will also be connecting people that come through the door with opportunities that are out there externally that do the job better than, than we do.
And is this an existing person that's transitioning or is it a new hire?
No, this is an existing person that's transitioning.
And, and, um, I, I, lastly, I, I don't, maybe I missed it, but I don't think I saw any, like, key deliverables or KPIs about this particular position. Is there, i- is the goal, a certain amount of people that come out of the Financial Empowerment Centers that are placed in training programs? Or is this more of a kind of exploratory year for this?
It's in, it's embedded in the, uh, the work that the Financial Empowerment Centers is doing. It's embedded in what we're doing around racial equity and healing, um, and, and leadership with the National League of Cities. So it's embedded in that, but we can break it out for you, um, and, 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 and give you some KPIs on it.
Yeah, I just, I, I'm really curi- I think it's a great thing to do. I think that there are, I think one of the major myths about this city is that, um, we talk, people talk about how there aren't jobs. I think there are a lot of unfilled jobs all the time and that if we can strategically train people for the jobs that exist already, that's a, that's a huge, huge, uh, strategy we should focus on. I think it's just hard, it's sometimes hard to prove that these investments work. And I, I think that it's a smart investment. I fully support it. But I'd love to see some measures and outcomes that kind of help us prove this time next year, when hopefully we're expanding it, to say that it really worked this year.
So, we can prove that it works now when you have, um, when part of the job readiness training or the REJOB training is to go through this one week of job readiness training and, and those people that went through that program are, you know, continue to be employed in. I believe that this is our, I think this is our third year for REJOB and we're re-upping with the EPA. Um, the same thing with the AMTEP, that you, that it's, even though it's an external program, those individuals still go through, um, we go into that program the first week and do a job readiness, um, you know, program for a week with those, with, with those people before they even get into, um, the nuts and bolts of, of YAMTEP. Um, and being able to have a one-on-one discussion with someone about how to dress for an interview. You know, being able to talk to them about what types of questions may be given to them at an interview. Being able to talk to someone that is in college right now, getting ready to graduate, not just about what they're doing, what, what they should be prepared for as it pertains to financially, but also what the workforce may be like, is something that we want to continue to be able to do. And it's a direct connection, uh, to those things. So, um, we won't be doing, you know, the, the, the hands-on training because we're sending that out to, to people. So if they want to learn culinary skills, we will send them to REOC or to Food Link or to somewhere else, another provider that's doing that. But we want to be able to have that nuts and bolts discussion before we put someone in a situation where they fail. Um, we want people to be successful. Um, we want to be able to send people to different, um, employment opportunity agencies that understand this is what is going to be expected of you and this is how you're going to be successful. We can build the stairways, stairway, but the person has to be willing and able to walk it. And we want them to know before they walk through that door and walk up those stairs, what they can expect.
Yeah. Uh, one more question about OCW. Uh, the, there's a measure in here about strengthening the small business ecosystem and creating new market opportunities. Again, very excited about this, but as you heard in my, my questions last month about the, um, the contract that we're undertaking with, with Dr. Ogilvy at our, at, from RIT and a lot of the other work going on, even in NBD with the different economic development specialists we have. My concern generally is that we have, we all know what the goal is. The goal is create more job opportunities, help small businesses thrive. It just seems like there's so many different approaches to trying to accomplish that goal, and I'm wondering how this fits in.
They all work together. And so, um, if you wanna, you know, part of, um, one of the things that we just did was come back, oh, well, Lomax can talk a little bit about this. They just came back from the Coffin's Foundation where, um, we don't have a lot of businesses in the pipeline. And so, we don't, we have a lot of, um, people that are on Etsy, that are at home, that are, that are, that are basically working out of their car, that, um, you know, we have providers that's in this community that's supposed to be providing resources and dollars to small businesses. But when it comes down to it, what we recognize is that our citizens, especially micro businesses, don't know how to access it. And it's so disjointed that it's not connected for them. And if you make it very, very hard, then they're just going to give up, especially when you're talking about, um, communities of, of color, um, that have to go through this. Uh, it is, you know, you go, you, you can go to the Urban League, you can go to Pastones, you can go to, you, you know, you could go to IBERO, you can go to SUNY Brockport Small Business Development Center, you can go to the Center for Urban Entrepreneurship. And nobody connects those dots for anybody, right? And so, if you spend all your time trying to run around with, fill out application after application and you're given the same information, what we want to do is remove those barriers, make it a lot easier for people to be able to access those resources that are out here in the community, but do it in a way where we're the glue that holds everyone together. And so, we're not just doing this by ourselves. We have partnerships with each of those, um, people around the table to say, you know, someone walks through the door and we, we can't serve them in NBD because they're not ready because they have a, a situation that they will automatically be connected to this ecosystem through a system, a, 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 um, a, a cloud or a, a, um, internet-based system that allows anybody to draw on that information. That's one of our community partners. Right now, that's not happening. And no one else can take on that role. When we talk about, um, you know, everybody is operating and doing their job, they're doing it effectively well, but no one is connecting those dots to send people to different places. They'll, they'll send them there and say, "We can't help you. You may want to go over here. We can't help you. You may want to go over here." But what happens if there's a uniform application where I can't help you, but these people can? And this is what you need to do? Now, what happens in right now, if you look at what we do as it pertains to first-time home buying, if we're not able to serve the person, right now, we say, "Oh, well, you're not ready yet," and we turn you away. But what we can do now because of the Office of Community Wealth Building and say, "We can't help you at this point in time. There's some things that you need to work on." Now, now here, Office of Community Wealth Building, get this person ready. They want to purchase a home, right? And so, um, then they can connect them with CCSI and other folks that will be able to delineate and, and make sure that that person gets the support that they need in order to now become an effective homeowner, understand what it's like to be a homeowner and what is expected of them. And so, building the ecosystem is actually being able to connect the dots for people and make it easier for them to be successful. And right now, we are program-rich and results-poor because we don't have a connection, because everybody is operating in their own silos, doing their own work. And the only entity that has no stake in the game is the city where we can build that ecosystem and build that trust among community partners because we're not competing with them. We're not trying to do your work, we're just trying to help you be more effective for our community.
So this might be an overly simplistic way of looking at it, but just to make sure I'm comprehending, at least when it comes to, um, your administration, if an individual i- who already runs a business and is looking for grants or the ability to scale up, that kind of falls to NBD. Whereas with OCW, it's for individuals who are, who are close to starting a business, who are already doing some functions and, and earning some money in different ways. But OCW is trying to help them get above board and starting a formal business to then pass it off to NBD eventually.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Madam President and then Vice, and then Ma- uh, Mr. Vice President. And then Councilmember Ortiz.
Mayor, at, actually, you, um, answered a part of a question I was going to ask or statement that I was going to make regarding why are we do it? Why are we the city doing these programs? And my concern is that we don't just create programs because we, we've got to ask the question, why us? I am concerned that we have structures in the community that can continue operating when you're gone, when I'm gone, when the next administration comes in, who may not like that program. But if, as you say, we are building systems, ecosystems, it's all the difference in the world. I, I, I'm just really, uh, concerned that we be aware that we can harm more than we can help unless we're careful about why we do something. When we go to the table, why are we there as opposed to the neighborhood agency? So you responded to much of that in your prior comments. Thank you.
Mr. Vice President?
I think she was first, but thank you, Chairman. Um, again, kudos to the Office of Wealth Building, and it has evolved since last year because the mission statement changed significantly, um, which I think it mentions the, the ecosystems and all of that. So kudos for that. Kudos also for, um, uh, the Real Initiative and, and, and addressing that on page 323. I see that that's addressing the barriers, addressing biases. Uh, I think that's great. Um, and I'm looking at, uh, page, in 32, and a significant, major changes, uh, what says the Director of Policy, 89.8, uh, this is a new, um, policy, uh, street, how does this align, um, this particular new position? What is it? What are they gonna be doing? How does it align? Because it looks like they're gonna be doing policies and, um, excuse me, one second. Uh, Director of Policy position is added to the Law Department to lead, develop, and implement the City of Rochester policy strategies. So to me, I, I'd just like to hear a little bit about that position and how does that align with the Real Initiative and the racial equity lens and, and all of those things?
So the Director of Policy, um, position was created because, um, we have a number of different policies that are antiquated, um, and we also have people that have come to us and asked us to develop policies. Um, and the Law Department, um, in many ways have been asked by, um, you know, to, to delve into, you know, developing policy for, for council. This person, um, really is because co- city council, you know, are, is the entity that develops, you know, policy. Um, but the work that the Law Department is, is, is on their plate is a lot of, a lot of work, legal work that they need to do. Um, so, um, our policy director comes by the way of, um, she worked for, uh, President Obama, the Obama administration. She also worked for National Foundation. Um, and so, uh, she was returning home and we, we, uh, knew that we needed someone that can help us develop policy and look at things, look at what we currently have going on in the assisted city and what we need to change, um, and what we need to update. Uh, for example, um, we have a number of different people that, um, are into agriculture and farming now. Uh, we had a number of different, um, you know, situations where every year we had to redo and they had to re- apply for a, a new permit. And so, last year, we were able to, working with Councilmember Gruber, um, you know, extend that time to that, a five-year renewal for those busi- for those, um, for those, uh, farmers that, um, or community gardens that wanted to remain, um, in, and not have to renew every year. And so, really taking a step back and looking at, how do we do business? Is this the right way? Do we have a policy that's surrounding it? Because a lot of times, you know, if something happens, the question is, what is the city's policy? And sometimes we don't have a policy and, and sometimes we do and we have to go and search and look for what that policy is. And so, it really is, um, we're trying to get all of our policies up to date, um, look at what we have, what we need to change, and to talk to city council about what it is that you want to see as it pertains to new policies being developed and how we operate as a community on behalf of our citizens.
Thank you. I think it's a good opportunity, but, uh, and I also would hope that, you know, as we, me being a part of that Real Initiative work, that this individual person seems, especially looking at policies from the Law Department's perspective, uh, be a part of that Real Initiative work, uh, because clearly, uh, looking at those policies, you, you can, we can maybe be able to identify areas where there's adverse impact in some of our policy. Our current policies are, as you said, antiquated policies that we may have, may actually have those type of impacts, uh, on our citizens. So it'd be interesting to, hopefully, that, that they'll be included, I'm sure, uh, in that work. Um, the other pieces on 3, on 32, another major, uh, change is DHRM, applicant tracking system. Uh, and I just wanted to hear a little bit about that, what's in the past and what are our expectations of this tracking system?
Um, the applicant tracking system is implementation of the second phase of Workday. And the applicant, we have an applicant tracking system currently in place, but it's antiquated and it's not going to be able to be supported by the, uh, server and IT. So we're working to find another system that will be able to support all of our onboarding, civil service testing. It's really recruitment and those applications that come in electronically through, um, the internet and, uh, for jobs that people apply for.
Okay, great, thank you. And my last question, on, on 323, uh, it says, I'm looking at the, the events and over the years, um, and the number that seems to be steady is 525. And I was just wondering, is that, is that a, do we cap our events, uh, at that number? Is that, because that seems to be consistent with the other years? 323.
When you say cap, which one are you looking at? I'm sorry.
Okay, 323 on customers' perspective. Special events permit applications processed. So we process 525 events or permits. And so I noticed that number is consistent across from last year. Um, and I just wanted to know, because I know we have a limited amount of time, obviously seasonal-wise, with our weather, uh, the different permits that we put forth, and I, and I just wanted to know if I would, is there a certain period of time where, like, we're, we're capped at our events? Like, we only can do, obviously, and, uh, this amount?
So this is a, um, based on what we have or what people have come to us with, um, in the last year. And we do it based on that number the year before in 2017, 18, it was 497. Um, we produce 37 events, um, and the community come to us if they want to do a walk and, and, and do a permit to, to do a, you know, a rally or a walk or something like that. And so, we're not necessarily capped at that, that, you know, that can go up, it can go down. But given past history, this is the, uh, the amount that people come to us with permits and acts to do certain things in the city and that, that we've, um, allocated, um, resources, rather through special events or the, the police department or something, to allow them to do it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ortiz?
I have a couple of different questions, and one of them was on the, um, Office of Wealth Building as well. Um, how many, uh, residents do we hope to touch in some form or fashion with, um, in-depth training, the financial literacy we're talking? Do we have a, a scope of, of what that might look like in terms of the number of people actually touched by the training, if you will?
We can give you the, the, the scope of work and the, and the plan and how it's worked in other cities. Um, I don't think that I can, I don't think any of us can do it justice in a, in a small soundbite, but, um, we can describe exactly what they do and then we can give you that information, a detailed plan. Is Lomax or Brad? Brad it?
Yep, I, I can speak to that. So, um, this is a, this is an estimated target, but we're expecting to serve about 850 residents in the first year of the Financial Empowerment Center. And that's based on the experience of other cities.
Okay. Which is, which is great. Um, and I guess to some of the, the discussion, obviously, like a philosophical, uh, point more than anything because of the, the statement you made about how much we're having to do more of, um, than ever before. But it's slightly concerning because obviously the capacity to do all of these things versus the things that cities are in fact having to do, built to do, and only can do, police, fire, refuse, so on and so forth, that absolutely no one else does, uh, on there. And And what it looks like, perhaps, with all of these partners that we're working with to be able to perhaps transition one day, or if we anticipate something like this to continue in perpetuity? Because when I hear the conversations, it, it's slightly troubling that, and again, this is going to touch a nerve, that education-wise, financial literacy is not happening where it should be happening, which for me is in our educational system as early as possible and throughout those years. And so, what type of work or inroads are we making with these partners, including the school district, to be able to perhaps figure out a way to make this more of a natural system and part of the curriculum, to get our residents to learn these things prior to us having to step in, and when they're already adults? So, I get where we're going and why we're having to fill in, but by the same token, I think we also need to be looking at how we develop those systems with the partners, including R C S D, to be able to ensure that these things are learned early, where, again, we don't necessarily have to continue them in perpetuity. So, I guess that's just more of a philosophical, you can comment, but...
So, nothing that we do, we do alone. And going back to the council president's point, why is the city doing this? For years and decades, and, and, and I can just tell you what my belief is. There's big money in poverty in the City of Rochester. When we look at the number of agencies, the number of programs, the number of people that basically build empires, for me, it's a problem. Because in actuality, we should be looking at, why don't putting ourselves out of business? And that's not what's happening. Agencies are growing, and they're growing rapidly, and because the need is there. But it's also, in my mind, because people have seen a need or seen a lane, and they, and they work in their lane. However, we're not getting to the root cause of the problem. And we won't get out of the challenges that we experience and see with our citizens without someone that, or an entity that can really pull everybody together. And the Mural Anti-Proverty Initiative is doing some of this. The Systems Redesign is doing some of this. But at the heart and the core of it, many lessons need to be taught, and that information needs to be passed from generation to generation. And you're right, we should start off in elementary school or in school. But if you're a family that, as, you know, many of you know that work in the non-for-profit field, that are moving and being evicted, and, you know, you're leaving many things behind, or you're homeless, and you're trying to make a dollar out of 15 cents, your car broke down, you don't, you don't have anywhere to go, you're just trying to make it. And then, you make it out, and you, you might get a job, you're steady for a period of time, and, but there's, there's no lifeline there. And at the, in the end, you end up back in the same situation, and you, and you repeating this cycle of generational curses. And that's literally what we have happening in our community, generational curses. The number of people that are continuously impacted, you know, you can track back their families and see that there was never a place along that line where someone stopped and said, you know, this is the way you do it. And I can tell you that, from my family perspective, talking from my family, and, and people can probably attest to this, that if one person in the family makes it out, one person makes it to college, they build the bridge for everybody else, because then they show it can be done. It can be done. But somebody has to teach that. Somebody has to take that leap of faith. Somebody has to be there to, to, to throw that lifeline. And for many of our families in our city, they don't have anybody. They've never made that connection. They want to, they don't know how to. And so, we're stepping into a lane to try and, and, and to build something here that has worked in other cities. We're not doing anything that hasn't been done and successful anywhere else. What we recognize is that all these agencies exist today. We're not creating another agency. We're not creating another program. What we're doing is connecting the programs that we have with the people that need the most, and creating the opportunity so the person can be successful. Because if they have to go from place to place, fill out the same application, and the same application, they have to do it over and over again, they're going to give up. They're going to say, you know what, this is, this isn't worth, I might have a great product, but you know what, I'm done. I'll, I'll, I'll just suffer because of the fact that they're making it too hard for me, or it's too hard for me. And we hear that all the time. We're trying to make it easy for people and meet them where they're at. Everybody's not ready to buy a home, that wants to buy a home, but we can get them prepared. We can get them ready. We can not just turn them away. We can say, you know what, today may not be the day, but we can guarantee that if you follow these steps, it will happen tomorrow, or it'll happen in a couple of months. And that's the type of thing that we want to do. Instead of telling people, no, we tell them, not right now, but one day, let us show you how to get there. And, and that's across the board with everything that we're trying to do with the Office of Community Wealth Building and the Office of Innovation, the things that we have been able to see in the last couple of years. And, and as I said, you know, they've brought in with partnerships with E S and N B D, millions of dollars for us to be able to do this. So, we're not doing it alone. We're not recreating something. We are building a bridge to different, the connection, and where the glue, we're trying to be the glue that allows people to be successful. And if we are successful, when we are successful, then we'll start to see our poverty numbers go down, we'll start to see that the generational curses are broken, and that families are able to take care of themselves, and that is passed on from generation to generation.
And I don't disagree with anything you said. But my, I guess my point is, is that my concern is for us to be the glue in perpetuity. And so, I hear what you're saying. I just caution us, as maybe, maybe what the president was alluding to, is ensuring that the, the, the systems that we helped to create can live beyond us, and they, they fulfill what they're supposed to do beyond their just programs and system-wise as well. That's all. Because I just, again, when things change in the future, us having to be the glue for everyone makes me a little concerned. But, but I hear what you're saying, and we have to try. So, one, a couple other questions. There was one that was a huge transition here for people moving in from IT into the department, and one of the things stated for that said that it was to assist with kind of removing the silos so that people could understand better what departmentally is occurring. Can you talk a little bit about what specific do you, what specifically do you mean, and how exactly will this transition and transfer into your depart, into your office help with?
I'll start off, and then I'll let Kate May talk a little bit more specifically. As I said in the beginning, our budget reflects, you know, different, city council allowed us to do different studies. And what we noticed is that we have to move from antiquated systems, and, and we are not moving fast enough. We are actually behind the times, and that's because of the way that we were set up as it pertains to our IT department. And so, Baker Tilly did a deep dive into our IT department, and they recommended that we pull this out, pull this particular department out, and actually have it in the mayor's office to give it the autonomy and need to work with different businesses that we have in the city. When we tried to implement, and this is not just something that this administration experienced, it has been, you know, when we went to Munis and all those other things, we, we, we ran into significant challenges, and challenges that set our community back and set our city back, you know, years. I mean, we, we laid off staff when we implemented Munis, and had to bring more staff back because we realized that the system was, you know, we, people weren't getting paid. And so, when we implemented Workday and Kronos, we started to experience those same problems. And we, we, we had to figure out, like, what's going on here? Why is it that we can't do this as seamless as possible? Not that you're not going to have hiccups, but there's a better way and a more effective and efficient way to do this. And so, we did a deep dive. And the better and more efficient and effective way to do this was that we have this program management entity that can work specifically on changing these antiquated systems, IT systems that we have, and, and redoing it in a way, and working with businesses on the ground, so that we're not leaving anything out, but they can clearly focus on what the businesses need to be better, to better serve our citizens. And so, Kate, if you want to talk a little bit more about the Baker Tilly study, and what their recommendations were for the Program Management Office, you could do so.
Sure. So, there are three major parts of the Baker Tilly study. One is, we just spoke about, was around IT project management, and the other two are really important as well, one around IT governance, so trying to figure out, there are many IT projects that we could take on. There's a lot of need in this city. A lot of our systems are really outdated, and a lot of other cities have gone far beyond where we are with using technology. Given our budget and given our staffing resources, there's only so many we can focus on at once. So, one of the major changes is by taking project management out of IT and putting it closer to the administration, and also by changing the structure of IT so that we're no longer using relationship managers. We have departments communicating directly their needs and sort of filtering through this project management office, as well as the administration more broadly. More departments can advocate and help us prioritize and understand risks of the status quo of not making these technology investments. The Project Management Office, once they receive this better prioritization of the true needs of our projects, can focus in on what we can accomplish in a reasonable timeline, given budget. And they can also, there's no longer a conflict of interest of having that group embedded within the IT department. There's things that in past projects, IT could have done better. There's also things that the departments could have done better. It's hard for, for the project management group, when they're embedded within IT, to sort of make those points about what each side needs to do to, to better make these projects work. Removing them from that structural problem and putting them closer to the administration and just having a louder voice and a clearer voice, not having to filter up through IT management, just makes this all work better. So, we're going to give that a good shot. And also, the third component is the IT service culture component of the Baker Tilly study. So, if we can allow IT to focus on providing the basic technology services that sometimes get distracted by these large projects, then hopefully, overall, the other departments that have IT needs that are not these enterprise service projects can get their service needs answered efficiently and effectively.
So, we anticipate then being able to then do more by making this structural change?
Yeah, do more and really prioritize, especially with a risk-based lens. There's a lot of old systems, as the mayor mentioned, that are really, they're risky by staying on them. So, if we can focus on both doing these enterprise projects that remove some of that risk, but also make sure our basic hardware and software needs are being met, part of this was taking some of the folks who were in the old EPS team and putting them into the Application Services team. That will allow people who are already on applications, that we've already implemented, to implement features that we maybe didn't get to because they were in phase three or four, that frankly, never happened. The, the new project management team can focus on the new things. Application Services can make sure that applications that are already implemented can be fully used. So, yes, we will be doing more, because before, a lot of those features that were never enabled, just left, were left just not enabled.
Okay. And then, just, I don't know how you want to do this. Are we doing the whole thing, or?
Well, yeah, everybody's been talking, asking questions about all the three medical and that stuff.
Because that's what it feels like.
And we've only got a half hour, so.
All right, so I have two other questions for HR.
If anybody has any questions on anything in Section 3, being that we've been jumping around, just ask anything about any of the departments, HR, O S D, law, might as well. Go ahead.
Okay. So, my two additional questions. So, Tassie, can you refresh our memory, when, because there are a lot of different changes, obviously, in positions throughout this budget? And one of the things that continues to maybe be apparent here is that when we do upgrades, for whatever reason, the title of that job also changes. So, if someone, if someone deserves a raise, they deserve a raise. Why does it feel that, in order to do that, the title changes?
For an upgrade, the title would not change. So, if they, if the title changed for an individual, that means they were promoted to a new assignment.
So, one, okay, so there's a lot of promotions then, I guess, and, and other things in the other direction. So, anytime we see an actual title change, it's a bracket increase and a, so a promotion altogether. So, it's a completely different set of responsibilities then?
Yes.
Okay. I might have others, but I'll come back to you on that one. And then, my second question on here, can I get my annual listing of bilingual titles? Thank you.
Yes.
And in there, help me understand, Tassie, because one of the things that I think drives me crazy is, we put the comma bilingual just because that particular person is able to speak another language, as opposed to that title requiring that skill set on there, and that we see changes. So, today, we have clerk typist, comma bilingual, but if that person moves up or retires or out, now all of a sudden, comma bilingual goes away because the next person is not, does not have that capability. What positions actually require that skill set? How many? And you don't have, you know, I'd like to get that no matter who it is, we will recruit, again, to ensure that that skill set stays with that position. Because I feel like, again, it moves with, if you have it, comma bilingual goes on. If you don't, we'll see what happens after that.
I can give you a listing of the bilingual positions and where they're located. Bilingual is assigned to, that department needs that bilingual person to support that initiative or that work activity, and they speak that second language in doing that work.
So, that, the listing would be helpful. And then, specifically of those, how many will stay that regardless?
Okay.
I don't know if I'm asking it right, but that, that will help me greatly.
We'll provide that information.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I just got a couple of, quick on Section 3, then I'll go back down to the rest of my colleagues. First off, just let me say about the Office of Community Wealth Building. I, I think it's one of the most important and innovative things the city has ever done. And I've, and I've watched these guys since the beginning, and they know, Lomax knows, I, I watch them extremely closely. And I think that one of the things that we have to tell the story to folks is that what they're doing is helping to create the collaborations and the connections with the larger community, so that regardless of what happens with the office, or the mayor, or the city council, is, they're building those strong connections with Consumer Credit Counseling, CASH, Neighborworks, on and on, the CASH Tax Program, the CASH Coach Program. So, by strengthening those organizations in the, in the broader ecosystem in Rochester, it, they're really empowering them and allowing the city to, to help set the table, to get people to come to the table, to have those conversations where that wasn't happening before. So, the office really has the ability to really be an important factor. I think the mayor's point about the poverty piece is key. Some people use the word poverty pimp. We need to, we need to flip that in this community, and that, and that's what this is doing. This is, this is taking away that deficit model to saying, listen, less than half of Americans in the United States can come up with $400 for an emergency. How can they connect folks with organizations that can help them flip that? How can they help people? We know that one in three small businesses, if they create at least one job, America can be at full employment. How can they help those folks who may not have the credit or know how to create those businesses, then be able to go down to N B D or go to a financial institution to get a loan? That is the way cities have to think. This, this thing with the Center for Financial Empowerment, I wanted the cities to do this for years, because New York City has done it and had great success, and they're doing it. And they're, but they're not doing it in isolation. They're working with Consumer Credit Counseling Services and other organizations. So, we need to do more of this. Yes, it's an increase in the budget, but if it was up to me, if we don't have line out, it'd be even more. And, and, and obviously, I come from this background, so I, so I know how important it is, but I can't stress that this is the way we need people to start thinking in this community. Instead of trying to, you know, give people the fish, this is teaching them how to fish, and that's what we need to be able to continue to do.
Can I add just one very quick thing to, to what you just said, and I'll just be quiet?
Okay.
There are some, I don't want to open Pandora's, but there are some opportunities in our community schools. We know how we feel about community schools. There are programs that are, that are at community schools, 1745, and I can tell you where else, RISE, where there's parent engagement in the evenings. So, that's, maybe that's another place we could go, and I can help you with that. We have actually after-school programs for adult parents at 45, for example, funded by SED. So, I don't know if you're connected there. So, there are so many opportunities, and that's where, you know, we can vilify the district all you want. I'm not advocating for them right now. I'm not advocating for them right now, but I'm telling you, there are some opportunities at some sites for us to partner. So, if we decide to go into a different direction, they should be called on the carpet. Well, I don't mean that, well, maybe I do. But, you know, we have to remember that it is our job to hold people accountable. And if you have a program that goes and you're funded from four to seven for adults, for parents, for financial literacy, and there are banks at the table, and consumer credit unions, and exactly what Malik is saying, those are fertile environments. We shouldn't walk away from them just because, you know, they're schools and they're a district and, you know, they're disorganized or whatever. I think there, we have to find those unique partnerships. And also, Rochester works. We have to keep them to the table. They have workforce investment dollars that, that must be invested in the right ways, in the right people. So, okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. And I, and I want to keep it going because I know we only got a half hour left in this. My other two quick questions, then I'll go to Councilmember Clifford and everyone else, is, one of the things I'm concerned about is all these smart folks that work, work at City Hall, but they're nearing retirement age, so they may be leaving soon. How are we preparing for that? And have we ever thought about doing a phased retirement? Like, so if I, so if I'm Malik Evans and I'm 55 and I know I want to retire in 18 months, can I tell you ahead of time so then you can start finding somebody to replace me if I'm, if I'm this great person in IT, or a great person in finance, or this great person in law? Because I think I saw here, it said like, something like, one-third of our employees are close to retirement. And I always tell young folks, they think, oh, yeah, we got to get the old folks out and we're going to come in. That lack, that loss of knowledge scares the heck out of me. So, how do you, how, how do you bridge that gap to, to keep, to keep the folks that we know that might be close to retirement? We want to keep their knowledge and, and they can transfer it to these, to, to the folks that are going to remain after them. What's our plan for that? Because I know we have some very seasoned people here that are very knowledgeable, and it's going to be tough to replace them when they, when they leave.
You'll, you'll see throughout the budget and many of the departments, succession planning and, and, and putting people in place up under those individuals that are getting ready or we know can retire in the next year. You'll also see, the Office of Innovation did a partnership with the Office of HR, Human Resources, and they did a study to talk, to really look at succession planning. Not just succession planning, but also our employees that, a number of them that have gotten to school while they've been here and gotten their masters or gotten their doctorate, and we have no idea, and they're still in the same position and they're looking for advancement. And so, one of the things that we're doing through the tracking system, we're looking to do through the tracking system, is really a, what they call a, a, a plan, an individual employee plan. And so, we know that this person may want to one day be, you know, commissioner of NBD. How do we put this young person on a track to actually get them the, the knowledge and the information and get them into positions that would allow them to possibly do that? And so, we can ask Henry or someone from Innovation to talk a little bit about the study and what they found, and then we can ask HR to talk about what they're getting ready to do and how they are reorganizing themselves to actually make it so that, that institutional knowledge is not lost, but also that the employees that we have are happy and understand that we want them here and we want them to stay, and we want them also to advance within our organization, that they don't have to be stuck in a particular position for, for years to come.
Thank you.
All right, I'll give it a start with the innovation. So, Office of Innovation partnering with HR, worked with each department to identify sort of a core team for workforce planning and succession planning was the main focus of that. So, we asked these leaders within the departments to identify critical both positions and skills so we can understand if someone were to leave, both what would we be losing, but also, one, would we be replacing their role one-to-one, or would we be re, re, looking at that need for what the organization is going to have going forward and making sure that we're not only accomplishing what we've been doing, but also making sure we have the right skill sets to accomplish what we're going to need going forward as some of the department's missions evolve. So, this also involved asking them what they, what they need from the city, from, from the administration in order to do this. A lot of departments answered that they need greater types of training. So, we're working with HR to figure out how to either build those or buy those training opportunities, or connect people to existing training opportunities that exist in the community. We're also looking at some networking, being, being able to connect different types of folks doing jobs with each other. So, one of the things that our office wants to do is create a network of analysts so that as we're growing our use of technology and data, that analysts can learn from each other, so we can develop those skills without, you know, having to spend much, many budgetary resources. And Tassie can continue talking about our, our training strategy and how we're going to be using Workday and the applicant tracking system to further these goals.
So, with Workday, it has an employee development program tenet in the second phase, and we will be working to take the information that we've received from the workforce planning, the vision that department has, and those staffing changes that they're anticipating and putting, incorporating that in a career development plan for our employees that would be able to align with our strategic initiatives. And we would then be able to look at where is our talent in a given area, and if the talent is not there, what do we need to do to either recruit it or to develop it from within? In 2018, we also did a training, we did a survey on what are the training needs of the city, and that all incorporates into workforce planning, career development, employee development. So, all of these initiatives, working with the Office of Innovation, again, taking a snapshot of looking at what our workforce is today, what are the initiatives of this administration, and do we have the talent in place to support that? And if we don't, and if it's, we're going to be losing it through succession planning, what do we need to be doing today to develop that talent?
Thank you. I mean, I just, I mean, I interned at the city, I've worked, worked for the city. The city just has such impressive employees, and I think we're so lucky to, to be able to have such a great, great set of talent here in comparison to other places. You hear horror stories in other, in other cities, but you don't hear that here. And then, my last question is just on the projected budget gaps that we're showing for the next couple of years. Tim, and it's amazing how the city is able to still maintain services. Chris, I'm sorry, I was looking, I was looking at Tim. Tim, you can answer, it's a test. The mayor didn't tell you, you're switching positions, you're switching jobs. No, I'm kidding. But, what's, what's our plan for that? I mean, it's, it's amazing that we're, we still get less from our, from our peers per, per capita. I know we'd like to get more revenue, but, and I know the school district also has, has the same challenge. How, how are we planning to tackle these, these budget, projected budget gaps from 2020 to 2025 where it goes to as high as 40 to 70, 70 million?
So, you know, there is no magic wand here, unfortunately. It, we have, you know, a lot of the same options that we exercise every year. We, we go down to Albany, and Mayor is very active advocating for additional resources from Albany. She's been successful in getting a lot of capital grants, frankly, which has helped over time. Going forward, you know, we, we work on some of these larger revenue issues, right? Aside from AMaid and the equity issue, you know, we, we look at the GRT tax, for instance, that we, you know, we've lost out on and try legislatively to remedy that. We continue to work on that, and, and we think there might be some light at the end of that tunnel coming up. So, you know, we look at, you know, look for departmental efficiencies, you know, where we can find things to, to reduce costs going forward. And, you know, frankly, we're, our economy has done well, right? We've benefited from, from sales tax. And we've got, we've got management practices in place that help us, you know, on a year-to-year basis, right, to, to realize savings within a given year. So, we've been able to replenish fund balance from a combination of, of management practice and, and a strong economy with the sales tax coming in. So, you know, on a go-forward basis, again, it's really looking at, you know, where can we find efficiencies? How can we do some things differently? Hopefully, some of those, you know, technology initiatives, you know, come into play there, but also advocating for ultimately more, more resources.
Thank you. Councilmember Clifford?
Thank you, Councilmember Evans. Mayor, I appreciate the explanation on the project management and information services decision. I was a little nervous about that, but having been on the other end of some of those interdepartmental challenges, I really think that's a good move. I think on the maybe other end of things a little bit, I wonder about the future of the Office of Public Integrity, given that we have really seen a reduction in the investigative power, the use of it, and it serves more of an audit function. Are there cost savings there if we just kind of call it what it is, move it back into finance and, and call it an audit bureau?
I don't think so. I think that the Office of Public Integrity, you know, they respond to investigations. If it's a criminal investigation, they refer it to the police department so that they can investigate the, the criminal function. And then, they do the audit to make sure that the, the city isn't, you know, that, you know, our, our spending aligns with what our policies are in, in each of these departments, and they add up. And so, it's more of a partnership. If they find something, or if someone comes to them and they report something and they need to do some further investigation on it, they, they do that. But they tend to work with the department leaders and as well as the police department to, you know, execute those investigations if they become something that they need to involve them in. And Tim, you can talk a little bit more. We, we did go through a, a audit last year of, of the department, and it, it came back with, you know, that we are definitely on track. And one of the things that they wanted to do, you know, to become a full-fledged, not Office of Public Integrity, but a investigative office. We put that before council, I believe, two years ago, and that wasn't supported.
Yeah, that was a well said by the mayor. And the other thing that I would add is, in response to your question about moving it back into Finance Department, would be kind of the level of independence that OPI has. And I think that's a plus, you know, and it allows us to have more of an objective view of the things that we're auditing, whether they happen to be within Finance or another department. So, as far as the, the tools, you know, we work within the, with the tools that we have. And the investigations that we do are based on incoming information and the complexity and, and what the, what that information is concerning. We try to, you know, use the tools that we have, public documents, access to city records, obviously, access to our employees and interviewing to try to vet whether or not there's any credibility to it. And frankly, that's, that's probably half of our job on the investigative state, side of the house. The other function I think we serve in the investigative side is to be able to, and the mayor mentioned this, is to be able to kind of triage the information, make some decision on whether or not it might be a criminal matter, and then refer that to the appropriate agency. I think that's important. It's also another resource for the employees. And when I go out and do presentations on the ethics side, the ethics training is another component of what we do, you know, I stress that because I want OPI to be considered a resource so that, you know, we can have discussions with commissioners on down about potential conflicts of interest and about other issues that we might be, they might be concerned about. So, and traditionally, on the audit side, we function very similar to most internal audit departments. You know, we're connected, the Institute of Internal Auditors. You know, last year, I, I was appointed to the Board of Governors of that entity, and it allows me to kind of identify best practices to try to, you know, move that, that part of the shop forward. And there are times where those two skill sets come together so that that internal audit investigator, internal audit background and skill set meshes with the investigative skill set, and we can support each other and work as a team.
Thank you. Well, obviously, I understand the symbolism of it, but, you know, at the end of the day, if we're looking to expand these great programs that we're doing, you know, we just may want to look at the other end as well. Question that I will also ask of the fire chief, but wondering about our recruitment for the fire department and what we might be doing differently, particularly as it relates to recruiting more women. I think we've done a great job in bringing more diversity to the fire department, but our female numbers are relatively flat, and I am just wondering if there are some more targeted kinds of efforts we can make to really look for women who are aware of and hopefully comfortable with some of the physical challenges that the job presents.
HR is collaborating with the fire department on the recruitment. There's a public safety recruitment going on with fire, police, and 911. I, I would like to have Tom Miller, my staffing manager, go a little bit more into detail on the actual recruitment activities that are going on at this time.
Great. Thank you.
Currently, we are working collectively with the public safety departments on recruitment efforts. One of the big goals this year is to improve the female representation in all three public safety departments. We do have fire recruiters that are actually going to local health clubs as well as local colleges and universities, trying to target females who are, I guess, involved in sports and other activities there at those entities and that. We're also working with a company that helps with our social media advertising. So, through the analytics of the social media system, they're able to target basically females who have some exercise, health-related interests based on their internet searches and that. So, we did do that last year for the police department, and our female numbers did increase in that. So, we are currently now at the highest number of female police officers as well as firefighters that the city's ever had, but we do recognize the continued need to improve those numbers.
Great. Thank you very much. I think those are good choices. I think that the natural athletes, it just makes sense, sort of teamwork-based and otherwise. Though, if our searches are around diet and fitness, I should be on the fire department since. Anyway, just my last question relates to city residency. Where are we? I know Director Roy, we have some commissioners and some directors. Are we all city residents? How close are we?
All of our administration, they have a year from the time that they are appointed to move into the city. And so, some people are within that year, but they have all committed to actually moving into the city by the time their year is up. And I can have HR talk about the, the other numbers.
I would have to look and get you that information. I don't have it right off the top of my head.
Great. If you could do that, I guess might as well for all APT, anybody who's, who's required with their appointment dates, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's a house on the street, across the street, a house on my street, across the street that's available if anybody's looking.
There are many houses for sale in the East District to see me at, at the break.
Madam President.
You know, the, the funny thing about this, this house search is that many of the, the houses in the 150,000 to 300,000 dollar range are going quickly and going above the asking price. And so, many people have had a problem because they're being outbid it. They are looking actively, but they are being outbid it. And that's a testament to a good thing that's happening in the city where people are, are willing to make that investment, but to have some houses go 20 and 30,000 dollars over the asking price, I think that, that shows that we are definitely, we have definitely turned a corner here.
Madam President. And after the President, Vice President, I'm light foot after the President.
A question about the overall diversity of our workforce as it reflects Hispanics. You know, last year this time, I, I think we were still seeing the impacts of people coming here because of Maria or something like that, but there was a lot going on. And I'm not sure, and I know we were active with some of the activities as far as helping people to get help, but have we seen any impact in terms of our workforce? It's the first question. And the second one is, over time, have we increased the number, I'm not talking about bilingual slash positions, just the number of people who do speak another language, Spanish in particular. And if so, do we make that one of the activities available in terms of getting training in order to learn to speak that language?
To get training to speak the language?
You know how we have various courses for computers and all that kind of stuff? Do we have any Spanish language courses? We have looked into providing Spanish-speaking. One of the legislative changes that were put in place is that we had to be, we needed to be able to provide training materials, documentation, that we put out our policies in that second language. So...
documentation, that we put out our policies in that second language. So we've done that, but we also are moving to incorporate that into other activities and look at providing training in that area.
And we can get you the numbers of, you know, not necessarily, if I'm understanding your question correctly, employees that are not necessarily classified as bilingual, but are bilingual, right?
Right.
I think that, you know, from what I know, I believe that we've increased our numbers as far as the number of diverse candidates that we have here, especially Hispanics in certain departments. And so we can make sure that we get you those numbers.
So I know there's been a significant impact in the schools. I mentioned before that our pillars class, they're, of the whole, there's like 21 students and all except two or three are Spanish-speaking. They're bilingual. So you can see it throughout the system. And I don't know how that's bubbling up here, so I would like to see that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President?
Thank you, Chairman. One's a statement and the next one on my last question on this particular chapter. I don't want to rehash the Office of Wealth Building because I think we all agree that it's a great program. But I do want to just make mention that I hope that as we're continually to work and increase this program, that we look at ways that we can get from, we can align the program along with policy and actual legislation. So, because the challenge of it will be if we agree that it's a good thing and we understand the why, but we know that with administration, things change. And if we see the impact that it's making and we create it into policy and let, because we're lawmakers, and if we can create laws around some of the things that make sense for our citizens and also to help them, because I'm one of the ones who was a business owner who went through the city process to build my buildings on Jefferson Avenue. It took me two years and it was a very gruesome process. Had I not been as determined as I was, I would have gave up, you know? And as many opportunities, I would have turned around and said I quit because the process was just so grueling. Thank God for Phil Banks and Jessica Lathers who were amazing. They helped me navigate through that process. But if there, as we continue to grow this, I just would like for us to keep that in mind, that are there ways that we can discover to do legislation that would embed this into our policy practices and procedures and how we conduct business?
And I can have Lomax talk a little bit about that because especially with some of the real work, that's exactly what we're looking to do. So if, Lomax, if you want to talk a little bit about what we're doing around the real initiative and the policies and other things that are happening in the Office of Community Wealth Building, you can.
Absolutely. So when we formed the core team and went down to New Orleans to receive the kickoff training and support from National League of Cities to do this work, we settled on four areas that would be focused on workforce planning, BUM1, community engagement or community empowerment, media engagement and grantsmanship, which we're looking at as reframing it as fiscal responsibility. As part of sustaining the work, because we understand that it's administrations change, personnel change, emphasis change, we've talked about the culmination of this project having in place a real council or a real committee that reflects a cross-community constituency as well as internal departments and representation from city council to institutionalize the work. We've seen, we've had conversation with the towns of Brighton and Pittsburgh and Brighton has actually passed by resolution, a council or committee that's doing that work in their, in their area. And so we're exploring how could we do that. Councilman Lightfoot, Vice President, is a member of the core team and has been really looking deep into that. And I believe we've also discussed it in our work session with you. We definitely wouldn't want to do that in isolation from city council because we recognize you're a significant partner. But that's some of the things that we're talking about.
Thank you.
Very good. And my last final question, since we were talking succession planning, which I did see embedded throughout the entire budget and I'm very excited about that. But here, one of the major changes is eliminating of a senior payroll auditor for 77.9. So when you say senior, I'm clearly at somebody who's at that high level. And I'm wondering, can you just, is that a retirement? Is that a retooling of that particular position? Or can you explain that, please?
It is a retirement.
Okay.
And the position is not needed to be replaced because with the implementation of Workday, it has allowed us to shift that work. The work that was done was in systems is now being done in the area of staffing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gruber. And before, after Councilmember Gruber, are there any other councilmembers that have brief questions before we wrap? Mr. Patterson, no? Okay. Councilmember Gruber, go ahead.
You might have to cut me off. I got a lot here. I will submit some, Andrea. I will submit some via writing because I don't want to hog the mic for the last four minutes, but I probably will. A couple of quick questions. Kate, you were talking about the project management and information systems. It's obviously probably the biggest single change in this section of the budget. And I understand, I read my Baker Tilly study, it was my favorite beach reading of the spring. But have other cities implemented similar changes from IT into a more centralized space?
There've been a few other cities that have done this. Philadelphia had a project management office. I think that, I don't know really the status of that right now to be perfectly honest with you. A lot of private sector is moving towards this model. So cities aren't slowly catching on to it. There's a lot of things in technology. We're going to be kind of on the cutting edge here. So we're definitely going to be studying how it works and figuring out what works and do more of that and figuring out what doesn't work and fixing it.
So this was a Baker Tilly recommendation, but they didn't say you guys should follow the model of Philadelphia or St. Louis or anything like that?
They were more drawing just from seeing the problems that we had around project management, around service-oriented culture and around governance. And they said that a lot of the solutions the private sector is doing are reflected in the recommendations. So they didn't point to specific cities that were doing this, but I think sometimes we do need to draw insights from other areas and try to implement them, even if cities are slow to adopt this model.
Thanks. I have a couple of quick questions, then I'll close it with maybe a bigger picture one. But Justin, I just want to ask, the advertising pilot that we had passed, I see in here that it's been a little bit slow to take off. Has the committee been formed?
We've had some initial emails out to committee members, but we haven't pulled our folks together. We've been working through some technical issues with the skyways. You know, they have the outdoor kind of bracing and what have you. And we've worked with the provider to actually figure out that we need to put portions of the ad within that bracing and make that actually work and figured out the logistics of that. We've done so and now it's time to kind of pull the committee together. And we may actually make some investment of our own just to show, you know, what the finished product looks like on those skyways.
Okay. Can you just make sure that when the committee is established, that we just get a chance to know who's on the committee? Because I'm sure you're pulling in city residents and I'd love to see who's on the committee once it's established.
Certainly. We'll share that list with you.
And then I also noticed in the communications budget, there's like an $82,000 increase in wages, but I didn't notice any particular, if it's one position or if it's just a kind of, that's just overall increases. Do you have a sense of what that is?
Year to year, the overall budget is up 82.4. I don't know if that's...
That's not just in wages.
That's not just in wages.
Got you.
We did turn a part-time clerk into a full-time clerk just because if we're not ready to lead by example, and you'll see some of that where we're turning part-timers into full-timers so that people can make a living wage and take care of their families. Our part-timer had been working with us for a number of years and working two to three jobs. And so we wanted to lead by example and offer him the opportunity to become full-time.
Absolutely. Chris, just a couple of clarifications. So when I look at revenue, first of all, there's a forecasted increase in CDBG. I have to imagine that's not what anyone would have expected going into this because the Trump administration has not been very kind to that funding. Why are we suggesting there'll be an increase?
So we actually got our allocation and it is higher than we expected. It's down from the current year, but we're bringing more on budget. So some lives off budget, some lives on budget. What's reflected here is the amount we're bringing on budget.
And that's just, we just got lucky, maybe? I mean, is there a reason why this happened?
Well, again, it's less than what we had in the current year, but more, you know, we were kind of forecasting a 4% reduction.
Okay.
Yeah.
But also on the revenue side, I noticed that we're not, we're not expecting any major increases in licensing revenue. All the kind of licensing revenue is either flat or some of it is maybe a minor decrease. But as Mayor Warren was saying, you know, the economy seems like it's fairly strong right now. Houses are selling, building is being done. What do you, what do you think, why are we forecasting as though it's going to be flat when it comes to licensing?
Well, when we look at this, we look at, you know, multiple years of history here. So the economy's been strong. So I think the levels you're seeing are consistent with the strong economy. So we're forecasting, and we talked about, you know, in our work session, you know, sales tax growth, for instance, right? Being pretty conservative with that. And what we're hearing is that, you know, the economy, while it'll grow, we expect it to continue to grow, it's going to grow, you know, more slowly. So I think the, you know, the licensing, some of these, some of the licensing overall are sort of biannual licensing things that rotate and flip every other year. But overall, in terms of, you know, building permits and things like that, the levels we're seeing sort of are consistent with what's been happening in a strong economy.
Okay. I, one more question?
One last.
Thank you. It's tough to choose which one it's going to be, but I'll go for it. I think generally speaking, I do want to just, Mayor, I want to ask you to just explain a little bit as to how you wove Baker Tilly into this budget. I mean, it's, there's a lot of recommendations in here and it's, some of them are very clear. The stuff that Kate was talking about, that's right from here into the budget. There's other things though, like changing Dry's name, for example. Or another one was about succession planning with the public market. There's things that, you know, it's hard to know what makes it in here, why, what's being pushed, paused. How did all that come up?
So some, if you look at the overall report, they have some that's low-hanging fruit and some things that are longer term. And so when they talk about succession planning, Baker Tilly really focused on HR and what we needed to do with HR and working with the Office of Innovation. You heard the director talk about the things that they're doing around employee development as well as succession planning and as well as looking at how we actually service our employees and make sure that we're treating them the way that they need to be treated. As it pertains to the name of the Department of Youth and Recreation Services, and, you know, one of the recommendations is that we actually figure out where parks is going to be housed because part of it is housed in DES, part of it is, you know, part of its function is in Department of Youth and Recreation. That was a decision that we couldn't make overnight because they provide different functions. And, you know, even though it was changed, we didn't know rather, right now we wanted to change it back. They recommended that we really focus on providing youth services, that we provide those services to youth well. And that's the reason why we decided to, you know, to do away with OTR, to really focus on those programs that we know are working, ReJob and YamTup, that we really needed to focus on our children and providing exceptional service in our recreation centers. And so that's why you see some of the decisions that we've made as it pertains to rec and really analyzing where do we have recreational services in our city? Where do we need them? How are we providing them? You'll see that the commissioner really changed the functioning of the departments and moved some positions around based on what we learned from the study and being more effective and efficient for what our children are asking us for and what we're learning. As it pertains to really even the policy and looking at how we provide and evaluate ourselves with data and analytics, we, the Office of Innovation under, you know, Kate May, really turned in and looked internal about how are we operating? What systems do we need to change? And how do we prioritize those systems in order to make sure that we're not, you know, left behind? This past year, one of the things that we have coming up this, in the coming year, is our reeval, reevaluation or assessments. And we realized that the system that our Office of Assessment was working on won't connect with the state. And so we needed to move right away to be able to change that. But without having a true sort of, okay, as she indicated, that's a liability because if we can't talk to the state system to do a proper assessment, then the bills that we're sending out to our residents would, you know, would be inaccurate. And so we needed to move that expeditiously. But had we had a system in place to look at those things, what's changing? The state is changing their systems rapidly as it pertains to a number of things, not just property assessments, but as far as financial systems and other things that they're doing. And we need to be in line and connected to that. And so we're looking at and evaluating that and turning around ourselves internally. You'll see some changes in DES about service provides, you know, service that we're providing in DES and how we're really looking at our maps and appurtenances and all of that that we have in areas, the curb cuts and the cuts that people are putting in our roads after we actually pave them. And so all those things are in line with what we need to pay attention to as a city and how we need to operate as a city to be more effective and efficient for our citizens.
So the things that did not make it from Baker Tilly into this year's budget, that doesn't mean that you're not going to explore enacting them. It just might not be till next year.
Correct. There are some things that were easier to do and there's some things that are long-term. And, you know, so it's phased in. I'm not sure, I think that that's the IT study? Is that the IT?
No, this is the overall one.
So there's, they had some things that were able to implement right away and some things that it's going to take a longer time. And we need to think about, and we need to discuss with council, those longer-term, you know, changes that we want to make.
Thank you.
Anybody have any last-minute burning questions? Okay, we're right on time. We went over by like five minutes, but we'll make it up in the air as the pilots say. Let's take a five-minute break and then we'll reconvene with Department of Environmental Services. Let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll reconvene with Department of Environmental Services.
Look at your phone.
And on the last row, last but not least, Marvin Parker. He is our manager of Buildings and Parks. And next to Marvin is Angelica Stringer. She is a key member of the Commissioner's staff. She does all of our HR work. This budget has been a total team effort. We look to every single member of the team to make sure that we have a comprehensive budget and we make sure that nothing's not said and we do a comprehensive job on that. So I was told that I didn't have to do an opening statement, so I wasn't going to provide one. I think it's more important to just identify my staff folks that are here.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. For my colleagues, feel free to ask questions on anything in Section 7. I know that sometimes folks like to jump around. I'm fine with that. So we'll start with Section 7, which is the Department of Environmental Services. We'll start with questions. Vice President Lightfoot, and then Councilmember Spall.
Chairman, and thank you to Commissioner Norm Jones. I really, I said it outside, and I'll tell you and to your staff, I really believe that you guys do an amazing, outstanding job for our citizens. Your, the task that you have to do, especially when we know potholes is one of the biggest issues that people want to complain about in the city. And I have to be honest, that it is a big complaint, and it is something that I know you guys are working tirelessly on. Page 72, Rock the River Management Entity Study. Can you just give me an update on that, please?
Right now, we have Jim Clor and his team that are, that's working on an assessment and some basically recommendations on how to proceed. He's been in Rochester three separate occasions, meeting with key staff members in city government, but also some of the stakeholders. I believe we should be having a final report within a matter of months, and the mayor wants to add a little bit to that.
So as you all know, that in combination with not only the downtown development folks, but GRE, the Chamber, as well as our business partners, they have Rock 2025 that they're looking at. They've, and we're looking at how do we work with the, not just the Rock 2025, but also the Rock the River Way to try to work together, to combine and deliver exceptional service in programming in downtown Rochester. And so this is not just something that we're working on internally as to how we function, but it's also, as the Commissioner said, with our external partners on how exactly we should organize in order to be as effective and as efficient as possible and what that board, if it's a board, looks like. Also exploring options that have been on the table before, like Downtown, a bid Downtown. And so we're looking at the way other cities have organized bids and organized in a way that it makes it sustainable over time. So, and that we have to do that with partners. And so we believe that in the next couple weeks to a month that we'll be able to have a path that we can come to City Council and talk about.
Okay. Thank you. Just a couple more, and I'll get out the way so other people can ask questions. On same page, focus will be concentrated on adherence to pavement restoration requirements in the road out of the City Dig Wants policy. And I ask for your patience. This is only my second budget, so I may ask questions that may seem like. But I was told, I'm from the school of the only bad question is the one that you don't ask. So could you just explain the City Dig Wants policy, please?
Well, I'm going to give you a little background.
Okay.
We receive complaints through our 3-1-1 system, and everyone calls in and says, "It's a pothole." But 80% of the complaints we've received, they're not potholes. They're either appurtenances within the right-of-way that have failed, or they're actual excavations or utility cuts that weren't restored correctly. And what we've done in the last 14 months at the request of our mayor is to look at a process in which we would ensure that our streets are not being victimized by utility companies and utilities that would come in and not restore it correctly or not basically take care of their appurtenances that are within the right-of-way. We're really at a good place where we're going to make sure we have a criteria in place. If we just did a new road construction within the last five years, and someone has to do a utility cut on there to tie in a water service, gas service, or fiber, they would have to restore the street from curb to curb instead of just, you know, restoring that patch. And we basically have that in play right now. And it's something that is going to make sure that our roads are true and they're not being, basically not being restored to the level in which they should be restored. We know from past experience that if no one makes a cut or disturbs the road, the road surface stays true, and there's no deterioration, no breakdown. But if someone makes one cut into that road, that breaks down the actual, the sub-base, and it brings the road down to a substandard condition, and you start seeing road failures. So this is actually a process that we're going to have in place where if you go into one of our streets, for example, we just paved your street, and then someone comes in and they want to put in a new water service, either they'll find another way of doing that penetration or getting that water service in place, or if they do, they're going to have to do, from curb to curb, 20 feet beside that and basically be inspected by our permit office.
Now, thank you. I do remember this coming up last year, and I do remember the mayor saying that one of the issues we were having was the, really the enforcement of, you know, people coming in and redigging or doing work after we've done. And I, a prime example of it is the significant amount of investment that we put on Jefferson Avenue Revitalization Program, right? And so we resurfaced that entire street from Plymouth to Main. But if you were to go down Jefferson now, it wouldn't appear as if that street had been resurfaced. There's been a numerous amount of different work that has been done, like you said, and it's never restored back to the original way. So is this addressing the enforcement piece of that? Are we going to be punitively going after people who are not adhering to this policy? Or how are we, you know, addressing that?
Yes, yes and yes. And actually, Jefferson Avenue was one of the reasons why we started along this track because I, from time to time, I take road trips with the mayor, and she wanted to show me a stretch of road on Jefferson Avenue. And it was indeed not restored the way it should have been restored. This was in '16. I was able to convince RG&E to come back out there and restore it correctly. It was right in front of the Seventh Day of Venice Church between Clifton and Samuel McQuaid Way, and they were able to restore that area. So that brought it to light. And right now, we have measures in place in which we can basically hold the utilities or the person that made the actual penetrations feet to the fire for these situations.
And we want to thank council because, you know, you supported that Dig Wants policy and us changing our policy before, we didn't have a mechanism really to do that enforcement and to require that. And so a couple months ago, you passed legislation that allowed us to be able to make sure that we are able to hold these people that cut into our roadway after we have restored them accountable and give them the policies upfront so they understand. But one of the things the Commissioner and his team is also doing is making sure that all of these utility companies know where we're going and what streets we're going to be working on, and giving them the heads-up that we're going into this area. If you need to do something here, you need to do it now. And so that's part of the reason why we're able to now enforce this Dig One policy because of the fact that we're letting them know upfront that we're getting ready to do My Hope Avenue. You need to come. You need to do whatever you're going to do now. And if you don't, then you can't dig in here within five years. Or if you do, you'll have to restore it to, from curb to curb. And that's causing everyone to basically work in alignment and to work together in order to make sure that when we do this, that it lasts for years to come. And so another thing that they're doing is really through their internship program, I want to give them kudos as well because they have interns out right now actually walking around the streets, taking pictures and doing assessments of all the, not just utility cuts, but the appurtenances that are in the middle of the street, or I call them manhole covers, but I've been told that that's the wrong language to use. But for the manholes as well as the drainage, to see what condition they're in, whose responsibility it is to actually fix it, and notifying those entities of whose responsibility to come out and actually fix it. And so you'll see around town that many companies are coming out to fix those areas around those appurtenances, and they're restoring them to our higher standards than what was before so that they won't fail.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to yield to my colleagues.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Patterson, and then Councilmember Spall.
Just a comment. I am so happy to hear everything that you have just said, Madam Mayor. And I guess that means I don't have to keep taking pictures of potholes and subsiding manholes and sending in...
No, you still do.
Okay.
Because we want to take care of it right away. But we're trying to do a complete assessment of what's in our roadway now. And the Commissioner is going to talk a little bit about how we're, you know, coordinating with other folks to get all that information. But at this point in time, there's no one system where you can go to a street and say that Pure Waters have these many appurtenances and, you know, that is the response. And RG&E has these many appurtenances in this area. And through the system that his team is working to build, we'll be able to do that. We'll know who owns it, and we'll know whose responsibility it is and who to contact and the condition that it's in, and we can hold them accountable to come out there and fix it because it's their responsibility to do so.
Thank you. Because as we travel through the city, in many instances, I've seen actually some new work that's occurred. And they're just kind of slapping a little something in there, and it's a great big dip, and you know it's going to be a mess. So if you're going to be holding folks accountable and asking them to go back out and repair things to the standard to which it would be at, that's good, totally in favor of it. And I'll start sending you those pictures, too.
Thank you. And actually, we're going to have an app training session tomorrow at our Water Works at 2:00. That's for the utilities to come in and have a first look at our app that will provide them the opportunity to put their information online and talk to our permits department. So we are, we're way ahead of where we thought we'd be, and we're going to have something where it's going to be very user-friendly for people to be able to see what's going on and provide us with real-time information. We, no, we're taking control of our right-of-way, which is our responsibility.
So now, will this app be accessible to the general community where they can take pictures of things and send it in to you? Is that the plan?
That's a future state.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Spall.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioner. One of the things that we notice when we look at the DES budget and the scope is how amazingly diverse the skill set is, what's needed to be able to respond in so many different areas with so many, from water to snow to buildings to roads to security, so many different. The one thing that I think has, goes across every single department within your large, larger department is customer service, and it's the one thing that I think you are most, should be most proud of. And I see it every single day, not just from you, obviously you're on it, but your whole team. I noticed that we're moving some more resources from other departments into DES around training. I saw that, I think, on 7-12. I don't know if that's a new effort or you're shoring up what you're doing. I just want to remind you that you're already pretty darn good at it. So I'm wondering what else we're going to be doing and if that's something that, whether it's coming as a partnership with HR or others. Customer service is not just how you respond to us and to residents. It's how you respond to greenlight. You know, I've been in many, many, many meetings with you. It's how you respond to RG&E. It's how you respond to Spectrum. It's how you respond to so many different entities. It's how you respond to the school district. We share, you know, we share playgrounds. So that's kind of a theme, a higher-level theme. And I just want to thank you more than anything, but also ask, are there more resources being pulled in to DES around training and customer service for the skilled folks you have? Again, across so many different skill sets, but the theme of customer service is probably the most important aligning factor across your areas.
Yes, you will see in this year's budget that we have a positive of three positions.
Okay. Okay.
And one will be dealing with training and others will be helping us move projects forward through A and E to make sure that we keep on top of all the major projects that are coming in. And we'll never skip on customer service.
And how do we, how do we work with, in terms of cultural awareness, structural racism, the kinds of things that often people who were in the grassroots and having relationships with people often, you know, on the street and one-on-one, is that training that's gone not just in DES but across the whole city for new employees?
That's part of the workforce planning work that we're doing and the work that we're doing with the racial equity and leadership program.
Okay.
And we have a team from each of the departments that will be going through the REG&E training, which is in partnership with St. Joe's House of Hospitality, who has a grant to do this racial equity and healing training. And so we're doing a number of different partnerships in order to have our folks go through it. So we'll have a cohort go through their session, I believe that's coming up either in July or August. And then they'll be able, it's like train a trainer, they'll be able to go into their particular departments and train their employees or their peers as well. But part of that workforce planning and development that Tassi was talking about and that we're doing in HR and looking at what needs to be done incorporates just that. From the very beginning, as an employee, we actually got some documents from, I believe, Orleans County Department of Education, they sent us some of their curriculum and books and things like that that we're taking a look at as well. Our, our, our employee trainer, John De, is taking a look at and pulling some information out of that and working with Letitia to pull that together.
Because we can buy new trucks and we can buy new equipment and we can do all that and get new uniforms if we don't have that awareness, that customer service, all is for a loss. So thank you for that. Is it, is it Mike Boucher and Candace at St. Joe's, is it House of Hospitality or is it St. Joseph's Neighborhood Center?
Candace Lucas.
Yeah, okay, so that's not St. Joe's Hospitality, that's the other St. Joe's. That makes sense because a lot of us not-for-profits are also involved and they've got a great curriculum, so.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
The REG&E training?
Yeah.
Councilmember Gruber.
Thank you. I will limit my questions, but wouldn't, wouldn't mind getting it back at some point before, before the end.
You'll get them back.
Because I don't, I don't want to hog the mic for too much. But can I start, Commissioner Jones, can I just get some clarity on the Rock the Riverway management entity and the study with Jim Klor? We had a work session with him, made it clear that he's going to come back with some recommendations. Is this stuff staying under DES kind of until that management entity is formed and then it'll, it'll be something that leaves your department or is this something that DES will oversee as, as long as there is something to oversee?
Well, basically, it's going to be his recommendations on the actual structure, the format, where it should be housed. We are, we've been the entity that has more, basically, folks working on Rock the Riverway. We do have experience with the downtown enhancement district and we've been able to be resources and we've, all the actual applications, funding applications for Rock the Riverway has been basically prepared by the DES folks. So that recommendation will be going to basically the mayor's office and then the mayor's office will say which direction we're going.
Gotcha.
So we're, we're open and we're willing to work with, with Jim, he's a great resource and I'm just, I'm waiting for his recommendations.
Thanks. So when I look at the DES budget, there's three things that jump out, it's very exciting to me and I just, just want to ask you to kind of comment on how you see them happening this year or what, what you actually see happening this year. And the three things are the community choice aggregation, the composting and organics, which I think is really, really exciting, and, and kind of related to that also is I see an added position for community gardens. And I'm just wondering, those, I think those are all really excellent things to be documenting, to be talking about our path forward. They all fit into, by the way, the, you know, Rochester 2034 in very clear ways. But at least with CCA and composting, they're very complex. You know much better than me. So how do you imagine them rolling out this year? What do you think you can get accomplished this year?
Well, the, the first thing with, with the CCA is that we have to have these, basically, Public Service Commission move on certain items that's in their preview right now. We think that's going to happen soon. Once that happens, that'll basically open the door for us to proceed with CCA. And then once that occurs, we will provide, or we will ask for a provider to basically be the, the vendor of choice, like they do in Westchester County, they have a CCA. But the first thing is it's up to the actual Public Service Commission to do things around the GRT to make sure that that happens.
And you, you think there's a light at the end of the tunnel? Because I've been asking Tim nonstop for the past 18 months.
I believe, working with the, with the mayor's, basically guidance and meeting with RG&E, NICE, Avon Grid, we believe we have a path forward that's going to be, should be happening soon. And I think we're at a good place where we think we're going to meet that fourth quarter estimate for the CCA and a nice rollout. So I'm just waiting for the mandate from the PSC.
And that, that would be revenue positive for the city, right? Assuming everything works out at the Public Service Commission?
There's a potential for that, but I don't want to get in front of it.
Sure.
So, you know, we're, we're waiting for the PSC to basically promulgate those rules.
Okay.
So, and the next topic was composting. We've, we're in the process of selecting one of the consultant engineers, engineering firms. We've sent out a RFP. It was well received and we've been, we narrowed it down to two and we're working on that right now. Community composting is the next step in our progression in regards to managing our solid waste. We went from pilot program in 88 to a three-stream program in 91, to a mandatory program in 93, to this full-stream containerized program in 2015. And the results are fairly well, we're able to do a lot of different things because of how we are managing our recycling. And the next phase is to, as we get down to net zero with refuse, the next phase is how do we deal with organics? And that's just looking at different aspects of the waste stream. So we have a real good proposal out there and we'll probably be coming to council within the next month with a recommendation.
So the RFP that you sent out was for a company to come in and do, and do a study of what it's going to take for the city?
Yes.
So the hope would be that you come to us to vote on it in the next couple of months and the, would the study be completed in this fiscal year?
Fourth quarter.
Fourth quarter.
Wow, it's very exciting.
Yes.
And, and how does that, so just last question on this end, the community gardening, the investment in someone to do community gardening, I, hopefully there's some linkage between the organics and the composting and this person. I think that's partially why they're in DES. What are the goals and outcomes that we hope for this person?
I know the mayor wants to answer that.
So what we, what we found is that we have a number of community gardens across the city that have been abandoned. We had no one that was doing a full assessment of whether we need to actually remove them from the list, we actually need to put them on a list to be mowed or to take out everything and redo it. We have a number of community gardens that need support, so they need resources, they need to know that, what the city has available as far as soil. There's a number of grants that are out there federally from Miracle Grow, from the US Conference of Mayors and other places for community gardening. And so we wanted to, you know, make sure that we were on top of that and applying for those, those grants and bringing in those resources to our city. Another thing was that we, we recognize that we have food deserts in our community and really some other cities have been very progressive in really doing an assessment of those food deserts and providing for community gardens where neighbors can actually go in and not only, you know, help, you know, develop a, a, a community garden where they're providing for vegetables and other things, but also where they can just go and get cucumbers and peppers and, and collard greens and other things like that. And so we wanted to do an assessment of the entire city, know where we have a community gardens, know where they're abandoned, know who's in charge of them, know what we should be doing to assess them and if they're being properly taken care of. We have a number of different community gardens that have access to water that cost the city about $3,000 to install that are not being utilized right now. And we need to, you know, instead of having people come to us and say, well, we want to do a community garden here and we're starting something new, we can say, well, no, we want you to do it here. And so we want to manage it better because we believe that it's an asset and there's also a, new programs to bring kids into it and to expand what we do with our Summer of Opportunity Program as it pertains to agriculture and allowing kids to be a part of that and getting involved. And so we have a robust program that we're, we're looking at, but the first thing that we need to do is get a handle on what do we have, what do we want, who, what partners we have and who can we depend on to, to help us actually expand. As you know, we have a number of immigrants that have come here from other countries that are used to growing their own food and we can provide through some grant opportunities at home sort of support and, and training and boxes and other things for people to be able to grow things right there at home in their backyard, teaching kids how to do it so that they can engage with their parents. They may not, you know, use the community garden, but they can do something right at home in their yard and be able to educate the community on actually how to do that, how to do that safely and effectively to be a, a resource where they're not paying for having to depend on getting that, that food from other sources or the store. And our hope is that, you know, eventually it'd come into a position where we can teach people how to can and do some other things that had, you know, literally been lost in, you know, from generation to generation. My grandparents used to can, they used to farm, they had a, a garden and, you know, none of us have a garden and that's wrong, we should continue that tradition and we want to make sure that we are providing kids with the opportunity to do so, but also giving them the knowledge and passing that on.
I give huge kudos, I'll see the mic, Councilmember Evans, huge kudos on this. I think it's a great investment for the city to make and we've shown our commitment to this over and over and over again. The one thing I just want to add as a comment though is there's also a very robust community of gardeners and urban farmers in our city already. In fact, just a month ago, they had a conference, about 150 people showed up to this conference and the city was under, underrepresented there. So I do want to make sure that whomever is in this role really does not try to take things on him or herself exclusively, but really looks to what's been built organically, pun intended, in the, in the community and try to connect that way.
And I know that, that is her plan from the discussions that we've had and now, because she raised the issue of the, there being a robust gardening and agriculture community here already that she wanted to work with and so I know that that's her plan.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Clifford.
Thank you. Mayor, can you talk a little bit about the long-term plan for the youth sports complex slash soccer stadium? I know this is not the position we necessarily wanted to be in and we wanted to be spending less money, not more, but I'm just wondering, long-term, are we looking at some maybe independent viability?
Hopefully, we'll be able to have some community partners and build community partnerships and I can have the Commissioner of Drives, who has a great plan and a great layout, talk more about the, the complex and, and the vision for it. One of the things that some students have come to me with and some teams have come to me with is actually being able to build an elite team for the city of Rochester to be able to compete on different levels. We've had a number of students go pro or be pro-prospects for the NFL and some other sports here and they need a facility like their suburban counterparts that they can practice in year-round, that they can be, have access to trainers outside of what they're receiving at school and in partnership. We've been working with the city school district athletics department on, on this proposal to be able to serve kids in a, in a unique way and give them access. We have a number of different people like James Reeves and Maurice Jackson and, and other folks that have, you know, developed different training programs for youth to get them conditioned to, to be able to compete for, at a level collegiately. What we see and what we have seen is that we have a lot of kids that are involved in youth sports, meaning that at a young age, Pop Warner, you know, rather we're talking about, you know, even in tennis and in track and other city youth programs and soccer, by the time they get to high school, it sort of drops off. There's not enough space on a team for everybody that's in Pop Warner to, to, to be on the team, but we want to give our children an opportunity to be able to participate and get the training and support that they need to be able to compete on an elite level where they're not getting that right now just because they don't have a facility to do so. Many of our suburban, you know, friends have different training facilities that they're able to go to year-round to, to condition themselves, to remain conditioned. We believe that this is a way to keep students and children engaged in sports year-round, committed to not just the academics of it, but also the, the, the athletics. And so once we're able to, you know, do that, we're hopeful that with partnership with the city school district, we would be able to build this facility, you know, future state, ideal state would be able to enclose the, the arena and make it a year-round destination for youth sports. We don't have a indoor facility here in Rochester or even in Buffalo. They have one in, in Syracuse that many of the, the children in the teams compete at, but our goal is to make, hopefully through grant process and being able to make partnerships and other things, to make this a premier destination for all types of youth sports, from lacrosse to soccer to, you know, to tennis to football and, and all that in between.
Wow. That sounds great. It sounds expensive, obviously, and I know looking for those partners is important. Will that be the Commissioner's responsibility to try and identify those partners or how does that fall?
We are in a process, there, there are a number of grants out there. I know the, the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation gave Buffalo schools a lot of money to actually study four of their fields and redevelop it. There are a lot of national organizations and foundations that invest in sports and so we've made some of those connections. It will be all my responsibility and anyone that can help us to really reach out to those individuals that are looking to make better and more investments into youth sports. We're starting off small and so, you know, what we want to do is, is start off small, get the place in a better shape, make sure that we have the, the resources, the security there, be able to, you know, make sure that the, the turf is, is clean, make the partnerships that we need to make and build it up over, over time as a, as a youth facility. But we are always open to other folks coming in and if, if ever we get another major league sports organization that wants to take part, we will approach it at that point in time.
But really not part of the, the plan specifically right now. Okay, thank you. Not really similarly, but I guess same higher level stuff. That High Falls Visitor Center, I know it's going by the wayside and there's so much else going on with Rock the Riverway, I just wasn't sure if there was any talk of any kind of visitor center as part of the Rock the Riverway plans.
Well, can we get back to you on that? We're, we're working on some other opportunities there.
Yeah.
That we don't have all the information right now, but we would like to get back to you on that.
You know, back in the days when they were on school trips and, you know, it was a stop there, it seems like that could still play.
Right.
A role, but, all right. And then just my last one is way more specific. It's about the cemeteries. It seems like since I've been involved, we've talked about the need for additional revenue to come in through our seminary, cemeteries, not our seminaries. to come in through our seminaries, cemeteries, not our seminaries. But, I noticed that we are eliminating one of the sales counselor positions, so I'm kind of wondering how that fits in.
Well, actually, it's, someone's going to basically take on some of those responsibilities of that sales counselor. The goal of bringing in more revenue is to provide more access to folks. And that's what you'll see as one of our KPIs is to basically, or our key measures, is to actually implement the scattering gardens. And I don't want to be morbid, but scattering gardens is when you're cremated and people would like to go there and they spread their ashes at Mount Hope Cemetery specifically because it's a historic place. We have enough capacity to basically endure the actual loss of that salesperson. The most important thing what we have to do is make sure that we keep other things going, the actual scattering gardens, more cremations. People are basically doing more cremations, not less, and those are the areas that we're basically looking to. Once you do a cremation and you scatter it, that's...
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I do, though, think that it's such a personal decision and, you know, requires some personal touch, obviously. Those people are going through tough times, that having that, you know, one-on-one person might be an additional benefit, especially when we don't want to raise money off the dead, but, you know, whatever. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Can you talk about, a little bit about the climate adaptation plan? That's always something I'm interested in. What's going on with that going forward in 1920?
Well, we're in a real good place right now. We started off, our Office of Sustainability started off in 2009, and we set up certain goals, received money through Department of Energy, and we've basically, made basically assumptions and goals that we're going to meet certain criterias by the year 2020. Joe Biandolillo is sitting in for Ann, and I'm going to ask him to give us a little bit more details on the actual climate plan. Joe?
I would like to get back to you on the specifics of the plan. Do you have specific questions that we can respond to?
No, no, just any highlights you might have, or what's, you know, what's going on with it overall, any thing that's new, any of that type of stuff?
If you don't mind, I'd like to get back to you with that information.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Unfortunately, Ann, our manager, DQ, is the expert, and she's away today.
Okay.
I would just like to add, though, that in our recent, one of our recent calls with the rating agency, Moody's, actually it was, the Moody's analyst asked about the effects of climate change on Rochester and what we were looking at going forward. And we were able to point to the study that we did and actually provide that to them, and they were very appreciative of that. So, they looked at us as being progressive for having gone through that work.
Exactly, and I think we have a great plan, and I want to make sure that we keep it on the forefront, so folks don't forget about it. Any other questions? Councilmember Ortiz, and then Councilmember Spal?
Can you give us an update on the telecommunications ordinance or the legislation that we passed? I know we were all very fearful of what might happen as a result of that passing, so I'm just curious now, a few months later, what may have transpired since we passed that?
Well, we were finding that people are basically abiding by the ordinance. We've received revenue. We basically framed the first check that we received. It's a strong document. There's been just a little bit of pushback, but actually, people are coming to the table and they're adhering to the actual ordinance. They have, I believe, up until December 31st, they actually pay their actual dues or fees for the actual ordinance sake, and it's something that's been effective. Louis Tobias, our Director of Telecom, is anything you want to add?
Thank you, Commissioner. I think we've...
Can you turn on your mic?
Thank you, Commissioner. I think we've seen great positive feedback. We are in the process right now of discussions with multiple new companies who are looking to move in the area, and if you go around town, you'll actually see that there are companies who are moving forward in the deployment of new telecom facilities throughout the city. So, we're properly situated. Matter of fact, as Commissioner said, we actually received a check last week for $12,000 from someone who registered, so folks are a couple.
So, did we not receive or anticipate thus far any of the lawsuits that were pending or threatened at the time we were looking at that?
We have not received a lawsuit. We have received inquiry from one of the providers for additional information for us to outline some, you know, some specifics, and, you know, we anticipate that that was to try to get additional information for possibly a lawsuit, but we have not received anything yet. We just responded that our, you know, with a standard letter from our law department, and we're waiting to see.
Okay, great. Couple other, just, there was the discussion of the community gardens, and saddened to hear that some of them have been, you know, kind of abandoned, if you will, but for those that do remain or folks that are interested in creating some, I do think it's important for us to, and I love the fact that we're talking about providing them more information about what resources are available so that they perhaps can sustain them or create them, but one of the things, and heaven forbid I'm going to say this, but some guidelines, perhaps, for folks that are interested in community gardens, because I feel like for the ones that I'm aware of, we talk about, you know, folks being able to go into the gardens to get the vegetables or fruit or whatever it is that they're growing there, but I've noticed that many times, community members that perhaps have not been the individuals physically tending the garden shy away from actually going and/or partaking in the distribution of what is available. So, anything we can do to encourage what that should look like, I think would be helpful because it seems quite territorial sometimes.
It can be.
And pretty much goes against what it is we're trying to achieve with some of those things. So, anything we can do to assist with that in terms of the expectations, I don't know if it's must distribute X percentage, because I find that the same three or four, whatever folks that are attending it are the ones that actually...
So, it's, so part of it is that we really don't, we didn't have a policy around this, and we're working on developing a policy around it. We're also, it's about education, as well as educating the community around the garden that they can participate. Some of the community gardens that have been online and that are very active, you're right, it's very territorial where it's, you know, where other folks have not been allowed to come in, and that's the way they've operated. So, we're talking about going forward and really looking at how do you make a community asset out of a community garden where anyone can come walking through and get some peppers and cucumbers and other things, and that's how it's made from the very, very beginning. And so, we recognize that we've had some challenges, but also giving the residents an opportunity to participate and learn about the fact that they can also partake and be a part of planting and growing and all of that, that we want them to, you know, feel free to do that as well. So, it's a matter of education, it's a matter of policy, and it's a matter of how we actually go about informing everyone about the, you know, what our expectations are, because we, in the past, it hasn't been that way.
Right, and I think that would go a long way in it, ensuring that the intended goals actually do get achieved on there. One of the other things, I think it was a few years ago, this is in regards to our Water Bureau and facilities, if you will, there was a document provided to us about outstanding charges, if you will, for either municipal, both county, federal, and/or other large companies, utilities, what have you, that had outstanding charges to us. Has that been rectified, or is there an updated list of what that currently looks like?
We could provide that to you, but mostly outstanding charges have been really brought down to a minimum through some of the actions of our collection processes and working with one of our major consumers.
Okay, that would be helpful. I remember that, for some reason, being a quite large number in the past.
We'll provide that to you.
Great, and then, one last, because can you give us just an overview? It doesn't seem like there's too many changes personnel-wise, if you will. I didn't necessarily see anything majorly glaring, if you will, but are there any things that kind of are on the horizon personnel-wise or anything of that nature that would be any major changes for you in this department? I mean, there's some transfers happening with stadium and everything else, but are there any other, for things that are just kind of regular, day-to-day things that we need to be kind of brought up to speed on?
Well, we really have an emphasis on making sure that we have a good succession plan, specifically in the waterworks. We have probably about seven professional engineers there. Some of them are entering into 30-plus years of service, and this budget allows us to place people that have been identified, to be placed in the roles so they can get the exposure and experience to be able to move into higher-level positions later on. We're also looking at succession planning in different areas within our organization, making sure as the workforce ages that we have people that are being exposed and getting the training and the experience on these different matters as, you know, as we move on, because, you know, we, eventually, you know, some of the older folks within the organization will be moving on, and we want to make sure that we leave the place in a better position than we found it, and we don't want to leave the cupboards bare. So, that's the main thing that we're dealing with. The other thing that, like I said earlier, we have a tremendous amount of projects that have come on with the Rock the River Way campaign, with our road projects. You're going to see so many, in every quadrant of the city, you'll see road construction going on, you'll see water mains being replaced, you'll see buildings being redone, you're seeing parks, you're seeing all these things going on, and we have to keep in front of it, so you're going to see the actual emphasis on making sure that we have the ability to manage these projects and move these projects forward.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Commissioner Gruber, you had a quick follow-up on that?
Just, 7:53, it mentions that two temporary positions are being added in design engineering to facilitate succession planning. I'm sure that's what you were just talking about, Commissioner. And we just had in the last hearing a very full conversation about succession planning in Baker-Tilly. I'm just, can you help me understand, how do temporary positions help to facilitate succession planning in this regard?
Well, when you have individuals that have, I don't want to say how many, with extended years of service.
Understood.
Okay. And they could retire at any moment. You bring people in on a temporary basis, and you expose them to that information or that work product, and then when they're ready to retire, you can have that person step right in. So, you're not gaining, you're not gaining a position in the budget. I don't want to have the budget director have any problems with me, but, you know, you have that person waiting in the wings, and you're not adding any FTEs on that. So, that's been a strategy that we've been able to utilize and bring people in, so they're exposed to those types of experiences.
Thanks.
Councilmember Spal, and Madam President?
Commissioner, I wanted to ask your advice on the future of recycling, and you've made so much, you talk about soft waste, what about all the hard waste? I mean, I think that we know that even internationally, people have less of an appetite to buy our recycled goods. What progress you made with Single Stream? I'm thinking about my tenure and how far we've come, and what's going to, what are we going to face in the future?
Well, it depends on the foreign markets.
Right.
And what's going to happen with those markets.
Right.
I don't want to speculate because of what's going on.
China doesn't want our garbage, is that right?
Yeah, I don't want to speculate on that.
I know.
But, our position here in the City of Rochester, we're in a strong position because we have a contract with Memorial County.
Right.
That guarantees that they take our material at a very favorable rate.
Great.
I think the key for us is to reduce our use of different materials. So, when you talk about recycling, there's reduce, reuse, recycle, is we keep those three arrows in balance, we're going to be in good shape. What I'm most excited about is the actual composting of the organics. We're actually, we're actually looking at receiving a grant from DEC on that, and the thing that we can't recycle is the stuff that basically are the protrusibles, that basically are the leftover food scraps. So, if we can take that and turn that into a hummus and use that for another purpose, we're going to be getting close to a point where we're, you know, we're at net zero for our salt waste management. If you look at your, for me, I'm an empty nester, but I don't have to put my trash out every week. I can, in the wintertime, I can go three or four weeks without putting it out because it's, you know, the cold weather doesn't smell. My recycling container, I have to put it out every other week.
Right.
Because it's full. So, that's the goal. The goal is to have a small refuse container with protrusibles and a large recycling container, and that's where we're at. But, I think, you know, the markets will get in balance, and I think we'll be in a position where we're always going to be able to recycle certain materials. There's always a value on certain paper products.
I thank you for staying ahead of it. That's what you've done all along. One other quick question related to Councilmember Ortiz is, and this may be something for Gary and the code people, but we used to have a lot of vacant homes where there was dripping water, remember? I don't remember, did we sort of take in care of that, too, in terms of water, just waste? You know, there was one year, years ago, maybe 10 years ago, when somebody actually gave us the amount of water that was wasted because those spigots weren't turned off or things were leaking in abandoned and vacant homes. Have we gotten in front of that?
Absolutely, and the Director of Water, Pat O'Connor, is here. What we've done is work with RG&E to turn off the electric and the gas at the pole and at the curb, and what we do is there's a curb box, we turn the water off at the curb box. So, and we also, we have access, we will go in there and take the meter out. So, we've been able to do that. As we find vacant properties, we do that to basically stop the lost water. Patrick, is there anything you want to add to that?
No, Commissioner, you covered that very well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thanks.
Madam President?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner, can you tell me what the technology upgrades are that are going to be, and how will the cemeteries be modernized, referencing one of the strategic goals and objectives?
Well, the plots and the information for the cemeteries is all on ledgers, and our goal is to transfer that information from ledgers into a digital format. And we have a technical person and an intern to start working on that. The other part is that we want to put kiosks in the actual cemetery where an individual comes, they want to find a certain section of the cemetery where they can come there and they touch the actual kiosk, and they'll put the person's name in there, they'll be able to find that person. But, the most important thing that we're doing is taking the information that's in these ledgers and actually putting it into a digital format, which is going to be a major undertaking.
And is that going to be done contract or staff?
We're looking at doing that in-house.
With the existing staff?
We have, in the budget, there's a, basically, a GIS, a GIS computer engineering person who's going to be working on that.
Thank you.
Vice President Lightfoot?
I just wanted to address the port. When you look at the budget, I mean, it's a significant loss we take with the port. I know it's an ongoing conversation and situation. I'm sure Councilmember Clifford would, you know, attest to that. Are we doing any... to, that are we doing anything in this budget to address the issues with the port?
Specifically?
Specifically as to how we reduce losing money, or how do we stop the bleeding?
Well, actually, just this, two weekends ago, we're not losing...
At the Port of Rochester, you're talking about?
That's correct. Well, when I look at the budget, it says negative, on page 739, it says negative $725,000, net income loss, Port of Rochester. 739.
739.
Now, I understand the Rochester community sports complex, you know, we just went over that, I get that, the 919 for that, but I'm looking at the negative, it's negative, $725,000, $700,000. Page 739.
Okay.
Port of Rochester.
I got it.
We'll get back to you on what's the makeup of this $725,000, but there's some exciting news that's going on at the port. All of our slips at the marina are completely filled. We just had a grand opening of Bill Gray's Restaurant. Bill Gray's put in over a million dollars to open up their taproom. Every space there has been basically filled, so we're moving this forward, and the actual occupancy is there.
Okay, my second question is referring to page 742. Last year's budget, there was a line for financial cost, which was like $125,000 last year. It's not included in this particular one, I was just trying to figure out, and it was for warranty of in-home repairs, and I just wondered if it was offset as a part of eliminating the warranty specialist position at 82.9. So could you explain that to me a little bit, please? In last year's budget, there was a line item that said financial cost for equipment services, dollars collected from warranty in-house repairs. It was $125,000 last year. In this year's budget, that line item is not listed under that department in this particular key performance indicators. Just trying to find out.
We're still collecting our warranties. This is basically a negative, basically saying that we are doing more work in-house.
Okay.
So the warranties leave after a certain amount of time. When the age of the equipment, you lose the warranty on it. So if you buy a 2012 or say 2013 Dodge Charger, you have a five-year warranty on that. After five years, you stop receiving the warranty payment on that. So we'll see, our warranties will go up and down based on the age of the actual equipment and the life of the warranty.
I understand that, I just didn't know if it was attached to, I thought it was somewhere, I can't find it right now. 82.9 was for warranty specialists, and I was just trying to draw the line.
Basically, what this says is that we're becoming more efficient at doing repairs in-house versus contracting it out, and we see a savings of $58,000.
All right, thank you.
Quick question on the city subsidy for some of the facilities that we help operate. I understand the convention center, it looks like it's going up by about $160,000. Great news at the War Memorial, that's decreasing by over $900,000, and we talked about the youth sports complex, so we understand why that's going up because we're looking at doing some, using that as a different facility. What's happening over at the convention center that's increasing the subsidy? What's causing that?
So I'd like to jump in on that real quick, just if you look at, it's about $160,000 year-over-year change, it's primarily capital.
Okay.
Cash capital and debt.
All right, that's what I was thinking, all right.
And then the War Memorial, the $900,000 to the good.
That's a good, right.
Is because of the contract that we have with PSE.
Yeah, I mean, that's great, and I was just going to comment and say, already I hear people saying great things, I mean, we had UFC at the War Memorial recently, and I'm looking forward to hopefully seeing more stuff like that. I think that's so far, would you say that that's been a successful change that we've seen so far?
Well, it's a work in progress. It's the first year, but we have mixed martial arts, we have better security, but we're engaging and we're communicating, and I think it's going to be, it's a positive outcome, you know, so far.
So far, that's good to hear. Councilmember Gruber?
Thank you, I'd like to get an NBA G League team to be playing in the War Memorial on a regular basis. The G League, it's the new, the minor leagues of basketball, that's a separate conversation.
You probably want to play in it.
I would like to be a guest. Going back to what you were talking about before, Commissioner, about in-house versus contracting, I see on 717, when it comes to engineering, it looks like we're actually going the other route in that regard, that there's considerably more consultant versus in-house. In fact, when it comes to architectural services, facilities, and building renovation program, we're actually zeroed out for this budget, and I'm wondering if you can just talk through that a little bit?
We've looked at that number, and we're actually going to raise that back up to a better number. We were not counting certain things that we do that we are not getting the credit for, and we will basically change that around, because when we do a roof in-house, it has to be designed, and it's being designed in-house by an architect, and that should be part of it. When we do an office setup or a design of an office setup that's done in-house, that's part of it. So there's certain things that we do, it's not the high-profile things, but it's still taking our time, and we should actually change that number. So we do office renovations all the time, that takes time from the actual arch services architect, and we do roof projects, that takes time, that's an in-house renovation, so that should be changed. And that was something that we missed, and we will make that correction.
Not a problem, but with that number aside, I mean, generally speaking, it looks on 717 that from actual 2017, 18 to budget of next year, it looks like it's an intentional and deliberate decision to, or at least acknowledgement that we need to do more stuff outside versus inside, and I'm just wondering what's making that happen?
Well, you have to look at the scope of the projects, as we talk about Rock the River Way, as we talk about some of the major projects that will be going on at the IR Centers, as we talk about what's going on at the convention center, as we talk about what's going on at the Brundle Library, as we talk about what's going on at the War Memorial, you know, these are things that are happening that the architects have to work in conjunction with a consultant engineering firm that takes a tremendous amount of time. So we're dealing with, most of those things are taking the actual time and resources, and that's why we added more resources, so that we can possibly take on a little bit more in-house things and take on the actual workload of these major projects.
But over time, the architecture and engineer department has been significantly decreased. And so we used to have...
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five architecture and engineering, today we have...
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. And so, for us, that presents a problem, because now we have all these different projects that are happening at the same time, and so we need people in partnerships with agencies that are outside that can actually deliver some of these projects for us on time. But our architects and engineers are working directly with them to deliver the services and make sure that they abide and buy our specs. I'm sorry, it used to be seventy-five, and today we have fifty-six. So, you know, we have a lot of projects, and, you know, we're thankful that we were able to go get dollars for Rock the River Way, but everything else that we had to do outside of that, like road construction and lights and, you know, maintenance on our buildings and all of that, we have to continue to maintain to do, and so we need to work with exterior firms that have a broad breadth of expertise, but also a different team that can execute faster than we are because of the fact that we have a significant reduction in that department over a number of years.
That's really helpful to hear. So that decrease of nineteen, that was not intentional, that was, we lost people and couldn't fill the positions?
Part of it was that we didn't have enough work going on at that point in time, and so the positions were not filled. If you're just doing what's basic, the road construction, the light construction, building maintenance and basic, then you can, you know, do that with a smaller workforce. But now we have millions and millions of dollars, of additional dollars that are coming in to the city from the support of the state of New York and our advocacy for additional dollars, and that takes us being able to have a workforce. And to be honest, our architecture and engineering department right now, they're very stretched because of all the work that we have going on, and so you're going to see an increase in those partnerships, but also we have some vacant positions that we needed to fill that we are filling now to sort of lighten the load and be able to execute more effectively and efficiently for our citizens.
Great, I appreciate hearing all that information. I have one last question, Chair Evans, and then I'll pass it along. It actually goes back to the children and families funding. I know this is not directly related to, it's not out of your budget, Commissioner, but there's a line here that says vacant lot maintenance. It's on page six of the children and families funding, and it says that we as a city spend $626,900 on vacant lot maintenance, and I understand why it's included into this line of the budget, that's a huge part of making neighborhoods safer and more vibrant. I'm wondering, have we continued, I know there was a contract that we had with, I think it was NEED last year, to do some lawn mowing and job training skills. Is some of this work going to be woven into REJOB now that it's coming into your department? And what's the vision here?
REJOB is an environmental skills type of program.
Not landscaping?
Not landscaping. We'll continue to work with NEED, we'll continue to work with CEO, Centers for Employment Opportunities, and we're looking at another entity to work with us on that. We find that if individuals who live within that community take on the role and responsibility of cleaning that vacant lot and mowing that vacant lot, that it stays cleaner longer, and they get some community pride associated with it.
And it's a great job training tool.
Right, so, and some of the folks that are, I've been to some of their graduations, and I've talked to them within the community, and they really take pride in what they're doing, and they take ownership of it. So REJOB is another direction.
So in terms of the vacant lot maintenance, the contract with NEED and with CEO, are there, are we looking to find more partners in different neighborhood-based partnerships to continue that type of work?
We'll go out for RFP, and once those contracts end, we'll go back out for RFP. Not necessarily with CEO, because CEO, they deal with a specific population, which is people returning home from prison, and they're the only agency that provide that. But for community-based organizations, we used to have more community-based organizations that we, you know, partner with, and they, you know, they dropped out or they didn't apply to the RFP. And so we'll do it again, and hopefully more people will apply, because we want to make sure that we're partnering with people in the community that's doing the service, that can provide the service, but has a connection to the community, and so we basically give the contract to those people that have applied to the RFP.
Thanks.
Any other questions under DES, Councilmember Ortiz?
So, just going through all the different changes in here, and again, I know that every department has their adds and cuts and what have you, but overall it looks like a total of an increase of six. But for your department in particular, of the cuts that are listed in here, is it fair to say that most of them have been reshuffled perhaps to different positions or retired? And if not, how many are specifically either laid off or eliminated altogether?
Reshuffled or offered different positions.
Okay, so no one is necessarily being, no one's being let go?
No one's being let go, we've offered people different positions.
Okay, so, all right, thank you. And then, along with the REJOB, glad to hear that we might be expanding, but when it's, the fact that it's moving from Drys to DES, are there any other changes that you might be implementing specifically for this program? Improve it, change it in any way, shape, or form, or?
No changes at all. I just had to let you know that REJOB started in DES. Did the initial grant application, Mark Greger, Ken Sayers, and I put it in, did the actual, all the research for it, and we moved it over to Drys to work with some of their other employment initiatives. So it's coming back to where it started, and we're going to keep it moving forward. REJOB is the number-one EPA job placement program in America. It is a model, and people look to us as something, as a shining light with that. So we're not going to let that fail.
Great, so it's coming back home?
Yes.
And can you give us, again, and I don't know, maybe it's in here, and I apologize, but total number of folks that have, overall, gone through this program and/or, do we have an update on that?
I believe it's seventy-nine, I think it's three classes, I believe it's seventy-nine, but this afternoon, Paul, because it's currently in Drys, Paul McFadden will be here, and you can ask him specifically, but I think it's like seventy-nine.
Okay, through three classes?
Through three classes of, I think that twenty-four, twenty-four to thirty people in each class, which had a hundred percent attendance, a hundred percent graduation, and one hundred percent placement.
Wonderful, all right, great, thank you very much.
Councilmember Patterson?
Just some general questions regarding staffing. Some folks from AFSMI reached out to me regarding some, I guess they're long-term temporary employees, some of them have been working for over five years with you, pretty much doing the on-off cycle. Is there any plan or mechanism for possibly having these folks become full-time workers for you?
I question their math and their numbers.
Okay.
So I'll get back to you on that, but we provide full-time opportunities every day for employees that are...
Performing.
Performing.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Fair enough.
And there's opportunities.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask a quick follow-up to that? So for those opportunities from part-time to full-time, is it ever possible that it then goes back in the other direction, for whatever reason? Or once you're full-time, that's it?
Once you're full-time, that means that you're in there, your benefits, you're a vital member of the workforce, and, you know, you have a career, unless you do something to mess that up.
So it's not, I don't know if the right word term, not a common practice, if you will, then, that I can go from part-time to full-time, have all those benefits, and then go backwards, and then go back and forth?
No.
That doesn't happen?
Sometimes you have people that work part-time or seasonal, and they may be in a temporary position, but never full-time, back to part-time, that just doesn't happen.
Okay, so once I attain that, I don't go backwards?
No, no you don't.
Okay.
So because of the DES workforce, you have seasonal, you have part-time, you have part-time seasonal, you have seasonal, you have temporary, so seasonal employees may work forty hours a week, they may be working full-time, but they're not considered a full-time employee with all of the benefits of a full-time employee. What the Commissioner is saying, once you are a full-time employee, meaning not temporary, not seasonal, not part-time seasonal, but once you're a full-time employee, unless you do something egregious, then you're not going to go back to being part-time. But if you are a seasonal employee, then you, then there's an opportunity that you will be fluctuated around depending on where the need is within the organization. And so, and sometimes those seasonal employees are laid off at the end of the season, but we do our best to find them another opportunity within the organization to continue to work, and those people that performed exceptionally during that time may be working for the city for a number of years as seasonal employees until a full-time position may open up. Um, and we encourage our employees in some of this workforce development training and planning that we're doing is to, you know, get employees some of the certifications that they may need to be, um, you know, to get their CDO, to get some of the other training that may help them advance to become a full-time employee faster than what they would um, in any other typical situation. And so part of that workforce planning um, through HR will give us the ability to be able to do that. Um, but because there's different levels of employment within DES, it can be kind of confusing, I know, for, for employees. And that's why we try to work with HR and work with our team to make sure that they understand exactly their position um, and their, their role within the organization and how they can advance to becoming a full-time employee.
Right. So if I am one of those part-timer seasonal and I so happen to get the forty hours this season because there's just that much work, am, do I, am I eligible for all the benefits that then get taken away when I drop down?
Seasonal employees, they don't have
Regardless of the hours I end up getting?
Right.
So there's no confusion there?
There's no confusion.
Got it. And, sorry, one last question.
Go ahead.
Um, when you said a hundred percent placement for the re-job, placement where?
In many of the, the environmental companies that the, the city has partnerships with and sometimes in DES and um, at, at the city, depending on what roles we have available in, in the skillset. And so um, like LaBella and what are the other companies?
Lou Engineer, Ravi, Stantec, um, uh, AAC. Um, we've had consultants come out and say, we need these people. You, you, you're the best breeding ground for the new um, site inspectors and, and things of that nature. Um, that's why we're doing the grant again for re-job because it's a, a great conduit for people to go get into this environmental field. I had a young lady who graduated from Buff State with an environmental degree, didn't have a, a chance to get in anywhere. She took a chance at re-job. We hired her. Now she is one of our major permit inspectors. So this is a person who had a degree from the State University at Buffalo that went to re-job and now she's working and she's, and, and she's bringing other people along. So it's not just people who have limited skills, but people who have skills but just need the experience, the exposure and the opportunity.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Lightfoot and then um, Councilmember Patterson?
Yeah, I think it's a, a great transition when we're talking about jobs, re-jobs and, and giving people opportunities. Um, the day before Thanksgiving and the day after Christmas, I was led to visit the Monroe County um, jail. And as a result of that visit, I was trying to figure out ways that we could impact or help being, you know, Chairman of Public Safety, Youth and Recreation, our young men who are incarcerated or who uh, have issues with in and out of jail. And so we were, me and Under Sheriff Cory Brown, we're trying to figure out ways that we could partner with the city to do something different within the county jail. And as a result of that, um, one thing we said is we gotta help, maybe we can help these young men, one person at a time. And he reached out to me, uh, for a young man he recommended for a job. I sent that over to Norm. Norm hired that young man. That young man, now his life has changed significantly. So I would say, you know, again, kudos to uh, 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 Norm and, and the work that you do and the opportunities that you are allowing people to provide. Because truly, if we're going to help people come out of poverty and, and, and the cycle of violence and crime, we have to give them jobs and opportunities. So, and that's something, a partnership that I think could be even more fostered between uh, the city and the county jail. And I just wanted to commend you for that. The young man is ecstatic about his new uh, employment and uh, it changes his whole entire view on life. And he was given an opportunity. Uh, so I, I just wanted to commend you for that.
Thank you, and we appreciate that. And um, part of what we're doing with YAMTUP and they've been able to receive a, a state grant, significant since, state grant is to work with the Office of Probation and the, the jails. Um, and they, in their June class, I believe that they reached a hundred and fifty people that will be going through that, that particular program. And so um, this is the largest class that they've ever done. And um, we're, we're hopeful that we'll be able to make sure that we um, see placement at the end of this um, for those individuals that are able to complete it. But it has been, um, you know, we recognize that we need to give people a second lease on life and this is a way for us to do it. And so we're seeing how it works out.
Uh, Councilmember?
Just briefly, have you reached out to DOT about their trainee inspection slots and their design trainee program?
We have and I will have a sidebar conversation with you.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anybody have any other questions on the Department of Environmental Services in the budget section of this book? If not, we're gonna stand adjourned and we'll be back for lunch at exactly one fifty. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank, thank you. Thank, thank you.
...